Recording in progress.
Show the date Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, show the time at five oh three P. M. We are missing two council members, but we do have a quorum. When and if they arrive, we'll announce their times. So we'll go right to considering allowing, if they do choose to participate remotely, need a motion for that.
You have no one, no one has notified us that they're going to be participating remotely, so you can skip this.
Okay.
Councilman Lyon is going to be a couple of minutes late.
Perfect. All right. So first up, we have adoption of the agenda. Any additions, changes, subtractions?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, we're into budget work session. First up, we have discuss and consider adoption of Village Marvin, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand thirty-five strategic plan. Who has this?
I'll just go ahead and open this, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, at our retreat this past year, we did things a little bit differently. We had the little posty notes out, and we kind of strategized what years we were going to do and accomplish what, what goals based on council priorities. And so what you see in front of you is the strategic plan that we kind of put together that kind of highlights what the goals were. We did, we did manipulate those just a little bit based on some conversations we had at retreat. And then we strategized a couple of goal one, three, and five priorities based on those goals. So you have that document in front of you. We can go through it if you want to in detail. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review this before this meeting. Due to time and all the other things that we've got to cover tonight, we can just kind of glance over this high level and we can bring it back. But I didn't want to go into, you know, line by line detail at this point in time unless you guys wanted to do that.
The only thing, and last time we did the budget, we went right up to six o'clock. So I'm concerned that if we get into this, that we don't get to the other stuff, which is more, I think, important. But we could put this on a, it's up to the council, but we'll put this on a work session.
This is basically what we discussed at the retreat.
Right, right.
It's really just putting it into a plan. So, I mean, I've looked over it.
I have too, and I'm.
I mean, I'm ready to adopt it if, unless you guys need more time.
Do you guys have any questions or concerns? Did you guys all get a chance to look at this?
Yep.
All right, well, then I'm gonna, is everybody good? I thought I heard, okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the Village of Marvin, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand thirty-five, strategic plan as presented.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Hearing none, motion passes. Give me one second here. Next up, we'll have information only for a review of the updated contract list.
So this is, this is a, we maintain this contract list based on all the different services and vendors that we have. Some of them are ongoing, some of them we renew. This is just kind of what we do in-house. And we review this every year at a staff level. We just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you sell anything that you wanted to review throughout the year, if you wanted to renew something, you know, if you didn't want to renew something, if you wanted to R. F. Q. for other things, we've got it here. But for the most part, we take care of all this in-house. It's just for you to look over. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer. So if y'all have no questions, this is all, this is just really informational.
Are there benefits to doing multi-year contracts on some of these? Do you know, or?
It depends on what the contract is, but it, there definitely is benefit to multi-year. For example, the all-inclusive for concrete and pavement, we do bid that out based on multi-year projections of what we need. So we, we bid that out to get the lowest bidder for the couple of years that we have those contracts. We do the same for audit purposes. It saves staff time, and it also gets the best rate that we possibly can at the time that we do the competitive bidding process.
And, and just out of, for, giving that an example, if we fall short of what we project, do we get penalized for that, or is that written into the contract? Like if you're saying we expect to do ten miles, ten miles of roads, and we're contracting for multi-years, but we only do five miles.
Yeah, we're not penalized. Yeah. It's, we, we project out, and if we get there, great. If we don't, it's not, we're not penalized for it. Are there any questions on any particular contracts?
I have one.
Okay.
On the service under purple, we have an EPA access agreement, air monitoring. Air monitoring?
Uh, that's, should be expired, yeah.
Smell from the plant?
Yeah, we had something years ago, and that one should be expired.
That, it remains active as long as it's enacted. It requires actually revoking by understanding, because it doesn't have an expiry on it. It just allows the EPA to get in, get to that site if they need to ever reevaluate.
Some, some of these agreements aren't necessarily services. They're agreements that we might have, like an H. O. A. with a maintenance agreement. We just kind of clump it all here so that we know that we have.
That we're not, we're not doing air testing. We're allowing the EPA to come in at the park to test the air.
Yes.
I got it. Okay. All right. I did not know that. That's information.
Yeah, that was all from the smell from the paper plant down in.
Any other questions?
Nope.
That's all we have on that one.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we'll have a presentation discussion of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Okay, so this really shouldn't be too, too big of a discussion, because we thoroughly went through the budget with you guys twice already. And this is just sort of a follow-up to the last budget session. Just to sort of recap where we, what we accomplished last time. Christina and I presented a balanced budget at the revenue-neutral rates, but also informed council that to achieve that, it required us to run extremely lean. We had to make two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in budget cuts from department requests. It required that we not put money in savings, in fund balance for various capital projects that we have ongoing and in the future. It also did not afford us the ability to save for roads and things like that. So this council went through the list of budget cuts, and of the two hundred and eighty thousand that we had cut to balance the budget, you all added back in fifty-three thousand in your agenda. I know it says sixty-six, but I had to rework some numbers, and it was actually even less. So that ended up, you guys adding back about nineteen percent of just what we cut from the budget. So nineteen percent of that two hundred and eighty thousand that we cut, you guys added back, which was about fifty-three thousand. And then you also asked us to make sure that we had revenue to account for inflation, since revenue-neutral does not. And I was asked to increase how much we're putting in the capital project fund for the roundabout, because we have felt that it's, you, you all felt that it might not be enough, and also that we could potentially have some critical intersection things happening with Joe Carr and the most recent survey that we got from the residents. So that was increased. And we also did manage to put twenty-five thousand in savings for future greenways, trails, maintenance. We had cut that, we put it back. And then we also were able to add twenty thousand to our fund balance for roads and streets. So still conservative in what we are putting in fund balance this year, but at least it was better than nothing.
One, one question there?
Yeah.
The roundabout, so was that just funding back to continue funding of the one roundabout? Or is that any consideration for the other potential future additional two roundabouts?
Yeah, so that's really up to, up to you guys as council as we get closer and closer. But what we do know is that it can't hurt us to save a little faster for the Bonds Grove Church Road and Waxaw Marvin Roundabout, because we were saving conservatively at one penny after last year's tax increase. So one penny this year is just going to be a higher amount of money. So because the, because the revale, one penny is where, is basically worth more. So we're able to save a little bit faster, and then this council will make a decision whether we don't have to allocate that anymore, or whether we continue to allocate money in that same capital project fund for future roundabouts that may come. Or maybe they won't be a roundabout, but y'all will decide to do something different at those critical intersections.
And, and that's being segmented within the budget, kind of earmarked specifically for roundabout. So if we accelerate the, the savings for the Bonds Grove, then we make the decision, well, do we peel that back, or do we continue putting into that fund for the other future ones?
Yeah, so every year, we will sort of present, here's where we are, here's what payments we have coming, and here's when they're going to be due. And I'll just keep you guys posted on how well we're doing, having those funds available when those big kind of construction payments are coming due. And then also, we'll be discussing how quickly, because some of this stuff might be happening simultaneously. If, if we decide to start doing some improvements at other critical intersections, we'll have an idea of what funds we have. And this will be talked about every single year at the retreat, and every year during budget season is, how much are we putting away in that capital reserve fund?
Thank you.
Can I add one thing, John? Because we discussed it, and we all thought was in agreement that these other couple of roundabouts we know about are going to be more expensive than what Bonds Grove is. So we knew that we needed to start earlier and increase it just a little bit.
Yeah.
I just want to make a formal note that both Councilman Lyon and DeTherich had joined us at five oh nine for the record. Go ahead.
So Jill, can you, do you know how much we've saved so far towards the Bonds Grove Roundabout?
Yeah, so we, we currently have three hundred and twenty thousand in that account, and that was leftover funds that we had originally thought we were going to need to spend on overruns for the other roundabout. The overruns were far less than what we had anticipated, so we moved that money and shifted it towards the Bonds Grove Roundabout. Then at the adoption of last year's budget, we added a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to that account as well. So it currently sits at three twenty. If this budget gets adopted as it's written right now, we will add another, another two hundred and sixty-seven thousand to that account. So it'll be, you know, looking close to six hundred thousand at that point. And again, we'll revisit it every single year. But we're not entirely sure that we will actually have a payment for the right-of-way portion of that roundabout in fiscal year twenty-six, because there could be some delays on some D. O. T. projects because of Helene that happened. We hope not, but it could. So we're ready for it if it comes. If not, it's really the, the big, the biggest phase is the construction phase, which we still think is going to be around twenty-eight, maybe twenty-nine, unless Hunter has a different opinion, but.
Well, it was supposed to be twenty-seven, so we've pushed back again. So, well, so I guess the, what I'm getting at is, at the current rate that we're saving, are we going to be in position to pay everything we need to by the time it's constructed?
I didn't believe so, which is what we discussed at the last meeting. And since you all authorized me to go up to a penny, to present you the revenue-neutral budget, I didn't go up to the penny. I went up to the exact amount that you all chose to save for it last year, which was last year's penny. But when you all discussed that, you really didn't think that was going to be enough money. When we went back and redid this budget that you're seeing tonight, we have utilized a full penny. So instead of saving a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I'm able to save two hundred and sixty-seven thousand this year.
Okay, so given that, will we be in position at that point?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay. So keeping that in mind, we have two more on its heels. And they're, last I heard from Hunter, we're looking at one point five for our match for each one. Is that, is that correct as of, as much as you know right now? Okay. So given that information, and I'm not sure what, what year we're talking about here for these next two, but we have most likely the one at Joe Carr, and Marvin Road would be the next one up, being that we have right-of-way already, which is going to make that one cheaper, but still. So my guess is, since we already have right-of-way, that one will be expedited, and it may even possibly get done shortly after Bonds Grove. So this is, this is my concern. We have another one and a half million dollars to come up with in the next five years, on top of what we are already committing to for Bonds Grove. So as much as I hate to even say it, I don't want to say it, but we aren't going to have enough money in the budget with that, with that budget that has been presented if we're going to build this roundabout. And I'm concerned about that. You know, I mean, this is, this is something, you know, we've been saving for Bonds Grove, because this is a very important intersection, and these next two are very important. And, you know, we've, we've got to be responsible about this. So.
I think you will be in a good position as long as this council continues to prioritize allocating large amounts of your ad valorem to that capital project savings account every year for roundabouts and/or critical intersections. The good news about a roundabout is the, the, it, it gives you some time, because the much cheaper phases are the design and engineering and the right-of-way acquisition. It's the construction payment that is typically in year three that is the largest amount. So even if we get completed with Bonds Grove, one thing we have to worry about is overruns. But there's also potential to apply for some C. R. T. P. O. funds to help with the overruns as well, which we would, of course, do. But pending, no crazy overruns, and/or pending that we could apply for some assistance with those. Hopefully, there is something left over in that budget or in what, in the capital reserve fund that we can allocate to the next roundabout and just continue to sort of stay on top of projections, number crunching, how much do we need, where's it coming from, and then adjust those allocations accordingly. So I think you're going to have some time, but you're going to have to remain consistent to setting aside this money for it every year and building it up until it's needed.
Well, that's, that's better news. I have one question for Councilman Lyon, since he's our C. R. T. P. O. rep. Jamie, with C. R. T. P. O. funds, we go for them, is that a match grant, or is that something that they just delegate?
No, there, there's some that we don't have, we don't have to match.
Okay.
But they do, you know, there, there's a, you know, a good portion of them, there is some level of match.
Okay.
But we, we have to get, we have to get in front of that. And Hunter knows it well, too. There's a, there's a fall and, there's a fall and spring.
Right.
And you, we have to be ready for it and.
So we need to be on this right now for that next one?
We probably need to be on it for spring of next year.
I was, I was going to say, so tonight, we're, during the regular meeting, we're presenting the two intersections in the cost estimates, and you guys will be making a motion to support alternative one, which is a signal, or two roundabout. Essentially, that just finalizes the report with the county. They publish it, we'll have that data, and then we can go this fall for the discretionary funding for one of the projects. Or both. I mean, it just kind of depends. I mean, we do need to think of it from a budget standpoint if awarded, but we can definitely submit something this fall for one of those intersections.
It's always going to help us because of the widening of Providence Road. That, that makes it, that makes it more critical. If you can get more critical. So, so that work, that works in our favor, but.
But I'm just trying to look at budget impacts and how we're going to be able to figure out how to afford this stuff. Because, you know, roads are not cheap by any stretch of the imagination in any way, shape, or form. So, you know, it's, from everything I've heard from the public, roads are important to the people in this community. And these are unfortunately expensive items to, you know, to do.
There are a lot of things, unfortunately, that are important to people.
All right, I get it.
But you can have the conversation one hand, and then the tax in the other, and these two hands don't meet. They don't talk to one another, and they don't like each other. Now, that, that's not for, that's, that's not for us to, you know, we, we do worry about it. However, this council has to be fiscally. Well, responsible, yes, but I'm trying to think of the word that's forward-thinking to take care of. Because what we don't, what, what we don't want to do is hand off to a future council, whether it's this one or someone else, and go, you got to come up with five million dollars. Because we chose to kick the can down the road. Someone's going to have to be the bad guy. I, but it just depends on what level of bad guy you want to be. If you want to, I mean, because at the end of the day, I feel like this council is saying, okay, we're going to be responsible with the budget. Yes, we are going to put some leeway in there to take care of things in the future, because we have to. We're not, we're, A, we're not kicking the can down the road, but B, we, we need to go ahead and start addressing some things now.
It, it softens the blow if you do it little at a time. But if you, like you said, if you have to all of a sudden, you know, come up with five million dollars, well, that's not cheap for anybody. That's a huge increase, and that's a lot of, you know, to try to come up with that. But if you save little at a time, like we all do in our home budgets for things that we want, large purchases, then it's, it's a lot easier for us to do, and it's a lot cheaper to save before than it is to borrow and, and try to pay it off after.
I, I would fundamentally agree with both of you. But what I'd like to see is, is for us to have that better idea of when it can happen and, and how much we need to save in those steps. And, and we're keeping in mind that we're in a, a budget year right now with the valuation, where Marvin across the board is generally seeing sixty percent increases in values. And while we're looking to get as close to revenue-neutral as we can be and, and still be fiscally responsible, there are many within our Marvin area that are at eighty, ninety, even up to a hundred and ten percent valuation increases. So even if we get to revenue-neutral, some of those folks at a pocket are still going to see twenty to thirty percent increases in what their actual taxes are. So, you know, we've, we've got a, we've got a year this year that's kind of an aberration, where we know, even if we're fiscally responsible, there's a lot of people in our village that are going to get significant increases. So I, I'm a little more hesitant, though I fundamentally agree with both of you, and we need to, to do that planning early in, in really starting it this year.
Is this what we talked about a month ago, or something with that we needed to stay the route that we were going on? We needed to stay with this to get it, because then we would not have that five million dollars. We would still be, you know, we're still talking about a penny, even though the penny's worth a whole lot more. But we're still talking about a penny worth of tax on this. And, and we got, maybe if they push it out, we might, might fall in our favor that we might not have that big, that, uh, that bill later on.
So, so while you guys are kind of talking about strategy and roads and upcoming expenses, it's kind of a good segue into the next topic, which is the Powell Bill revenues and expenditures, if y'all want to jump into that, and then kind of wrap that back around, because there are some things that are accounted for in the road tracker sheet. There's things that aren't accounted for, which are those future roundabouts. So the numbers look really good. Council's done a really good job planning for road infrastructure. We've, we're relatively new into the road business, so we haven't really hit a point where we've had a lot of major road repairs. In the next several years, we're probably going to start seeing that. We actually have one to report to you tonight that we need to address. It hasn't been accounted for. But slowly, we're going to start seeing that. So slowly, we're going to start seeing those road maintenance costs go up. And right now, we've got a, a stable amount in there for just general maintenance, emergency repairs. So you can look at that sheet, and I'll turn it over to Jill and go over in more detail. But we don't have the future roundabouts in there currently.
Yeah, I mean, this, it, when we made the decision to move the roundabout to a capital project, I have to sort of track that separately than what, where I've been tracking it. So this road in Powell Bill Tracker that was in your agenda packet is truly just existing roads and existing maintenance of roundabouts, and then some road acceptance things. And we are, we are doing fairly well, balancing both the, the Powell Bill money that we receive, which does seem to be increasing every so often, and then in addition, us being proactive to allocate money to roads. One of the, the biggest things that helps us save money for roads each year was the vehicle tag fee that helps tremendously. So we're able to kind of supplement and pad our, our roads account. And, and that money really doesn't just get used on roads. We're also using it for sidewalks and stormwater and curb and gutter and all, everything kind of roads, streets, sidewalks, stormwater-related. So we're doing pretty good here. But separately, I am keeping track and allocating money to these capital project funds for these, these critical intersections and roundabouts. And we'll continue to report on that with you guys year after year to keep you up to date on how we're looking. And obviously, as things transpire, I think I remember you all discussing at the last meeting that you might need a Band-Aid approach temporarily, whether that's a, a traffic light or something else that goes in, even if it's just temporarily, to buy us more time if we aren't quite ready to commit to a roundabout. So I think that was discussed at the last meeting, but this is all information that, decisions that you all will have to make in the future when you get more information back from the county. Does, what does N. C. Dot think about the results that the residents and the people in Union County said they wanted? What are they, what's everybody willing to pay? You know, what's, what's our expected share? And then it might be that we come back to the table and say, this is what we're prepared to, to offer, but we, this is all we can do, or we can do it, but we can't do it until this year. But I do believe the feedback that we've gotten from residents, for the most part, has been those whose quality of life and commutes and traffic and safety have been greatly increased and improved by roundabouts do seem to be fairly sympathetic to those in other parts of Marvin that are waiting for theirs. I think there was a strong support for us to go ahead and fund the Bonds Grove Church Roundabout, even after the G. O. Bond did not pass. And so that's what this council did. And I believe that the residents will continue to support roundabouts and improvements at critical intersections for their neighbors the same way they received it as well. So I feel pretty confident that y'all are on the right track to make sure that our, our roads are safe and that traffic keeps moving, because it's coming whether we like it or not.
I officially decided I need a roundabout outside my neighborhood to get out. Did you have trouble getting? Yeah, I mean, this, it, when we made the decision to move the roundabout to a capital project, I have to sort of track that separately than what, where I've been tracking it. So this road in Powell Bill Tracker that was in your agenda packet is truly just existing roads and existing maintenance of roundabouts, and then some road acceptance things. And we are, we are doing fairly well balancing both the, the Powell Bill money that we receive, which does seem to be increasing every so often, and then in addition, us being proactive to allocate money to roads. One of the, the biggest things that helps us save money for roads each year was the vehicle tag fee that helps tremendously. So we're able to kind of supplement and pad our, our roads account. And, and that money really doesn't just get used on roads. We're also using it for sidewalks and stormwater and curb and gutter and all, everything kind of road, streets, sidewalks, stormwater-related. So we're doing pretty good here. But separately, I am keeping track and allocating money to these capital project funds for these, these critical intersections and roundabouts. And we'll continue to report on that with you guys year after year to keep you up to date on how we're looking. And obviously, as things transpire, I think I remember you all discussing at the last meeting that you might need a Band-Aid approach temporarily, whether that's a, a traffic light or something else that goes in, even if it's just temporarily, to buy us more time if we aren't quite ready to commit to a roundabout. So I think that was discussed at the last meeting. But this is all information that, decisions that you all will have to make in the future when you get more information back from the county. Does, what does NC DOT think about the results that the residents and the people in Union County said they wanted? What are they, what's everybody willing to pay? You know, what's, what's our expected share? And then it might be that we come back to the table and say, this is what we're prepared to, to offer, but we, this is all we can do. Or we can do it, but we can't do it until this year. But I do believe the feedback that we've gotten from residents, for the most part, has been those whose quality of life and commutes and traffic and safety have been greatly increased and improved by roundabouts do seem to be fairly sympathetic to those in other parts of Marvin that are waiting for theirs. I think there was a strong support for us to go ahead and fund the Bonds Grove Church Roundabout, even after the GO bond did not pass, and so that's what this council did. And I believe that the residents will continue to support roundabouts and improvements at critical intersections for their neighbors the same way they received it as well. So I feel pretty confident that y'all are on the right track to make sure that our, our roads are safe and that traffic keeps moving, because it's coming whether we like it or not.
I officially decided I need a roundabout outside my neighborhood to get out. Did you have trouble getting it? Was from everywhere.
As you can see, we're being more proactive in the tracker. I don't know if you guys had a chance to kind of glance at it, but from what we're budgeting for and, and planning ahead for in '26, '27, '28, '29, and '30, looks a lot more crowded, and there's a lot more money being proactively allocated to various things compared to '22 and '23, and even '23 to '24. So especially with the addition of a Public Works Department, we're now able to plan accordingly, plan for sidewalks, stormwater, salt brine, equipment, all the things that maybe we couldn't before, but we're able to do now more proactively.
Okay, so the Powell Bill looks good, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Like, for the most part?
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Jill on the Powell Bill? All right, let's go back to the budget then.
Okay, so back to the budget. In order to add back the things that we discussed and make sure we're planning competently for the future and being financially proactive, we still are cutting 226,000 of department requests. You guys agreed to those cuts, and we're leaving them cut. Adding back what you all requested, we ended up at a tax rate of .0563. So it was less than a half a penny that I had to add above revenue neutral to get in everything that you wanted to put back in and make sure that we could increase the savings for the roundabout and save for streets and just really make sure that we're covering inflation as well. So less than a half a penny, we went from a revenue neutral, which was .0516, to .0563 is, is where we recommend this balanced budget based on your requests.
Quick question. When you mentioned inflation, what are you referring to? Inflation on what particular, everything in general?
Yeah, just, just inflation in general. Councilman Lyon asked at the last meeting if revenue neutral accounts for inflation, and the answer was no. So seeing as how inflation is still a problem, that our economy is attempting to tackle, it was, we were already attempting to run really lean just to hit revenue neutral, never mind not accounting for inflation that we're all still facing. So I believe the council directed us to use a 4% inflation rate, which we did. So we made sure that we built that into that rate as well, because that is a very real thing that we're dealing with, even though the revenue neutral rate does not reflect that.
I think it would be irresponsible of us to not assume that.
I agree.
The worst-case scenario, or you know what, the best-case scenario is, we see things do come down. We see things normalize. That could be the case. It doesn't hurt us. That's just funds that, that aren't spent at the end of the year. We roll, roll those back over into unassigned fund balance or whatever the case may be. But, but to not do it is just irresponsible of us, because we don't want to get three-quarters of the way through the budget, budget year, and then go, oh, we gotta pull funds from here, pull funds from there. It's just.
So, I mean, I like, I like this budget. I think that you guys have done a great job and with some long-term planning goals of expenses that we know that we're gonna have. But my question is, if, I'm looking at this grant page that is sitting in front of me. If a grant comes along, and it's a matching grant, are we gonna be able to do it?
Yes and no.
I knew you were gonna say that.
So it really depends on the timing. Right now, we have some matching grants already in play between the CRTPO Marvin Loop grant that we have and also the Village Hall Part F grant. And there's some additional grants in there from the State Budget Office. But those grants, we have to front and then submit for reimbursement and get reimbursed. So it's not, it's not unfeasible that we could do more. But currently, with what we already have, it's really, we just have to make sure, I have to make sure that the timing of it all works, where I have the funds available to front this payment here, wait to get reimbursed, and then front this payment here, wait to get reimbursed, and then front this one over here. So it's just, there's a lot of tracking. There's a lot of meetings with the various department heads that oversee those grants. We're constantly crunching numbers and making sure that we will have the money. So it really depends on the size of the grant and when we realistically think we would start actually receiving invoices that would have to be paid on that project. So if we apply for the grant today and we get approved, but we're not gonna put a shovel to the project for two years, and then we're probably gonna start with some engineering first, and it shouldn't be too bad. Again, construction is always the heaviest chunk. It's possible that we could say yes, but I will be crunching numbers and being extremely cautious before, before saying that we could definitely do it, and it might just have to be delayed a little bit.
I mean, I'm thinking, just as an example, a CRTPO grant. So if they come to us and they're, or we go to them, and we're like, we try to do one in the fall, or we try to do one next spring, whatever it might be, and we go to them, and you're like, you know, we don't have, we don't have the funds to do it. Like, I don't ever want to get into a position, and, and I don't know what to do about it. But I don't want to be in a position that we cannot accept free money. Now, if you guys want to, you know, try to figure it out, or if you guys, I, I mean, it's just something to think about, because we've never been in this position. You guys have done an amazing job. I'm sitting here looking at this. We've got almost $4 million worth of grants in a three-year timeframe. Like, that's amazing, and I don't ever want to miss out on that kind of stuff, because it just saves taxpayer dollars in the long run. But.
To Kim's point, if our budget, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's like around 3.5 is our budget overall. That's essentially saving each constituent resident a full year of taxing and what we've earned in, in, in grant money. You know, it's like paying taxes an additional year that we were able to secure those. And to Kim's point, if we can't match it, we're not gonna be able to do this anymore.
It's actually about two and a half years' worth, because the residents are only paying the ad valorem tax, which is 1.5, it's less than 1.5 million, and we've brought in $4 million in grants, so.
My bad.
So that's, that's a huge, huge amount of money that, that we shouldn't be giving up. I mean, let's just put it like this, okay, and this is something that everybody needs to understand. Grant money is not free money. You've already paid the taxes for it. You just paid it to the state and federal government. All those grants are funded by tax money that we've already spent. We're, what we're doing is getting some of that tax money back that we already spent. It's, and we don't have a choice to pay those taxes. I mean, that's mandated by the state and federal government. So any way we can get some of that money back and put it back into our community is always a good thing. It's, 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 it would be just foolish to not try to get that money back.
Well, I think, I, I think it was la, either last session or the session before, I read off a list of all the, all the grants that were given out. And everyone was on there, but guess who?
But us.
But us. And, and again, it, I mean, it, you know what, it's the balancing act, because, you know, some of, some of these, some of these municipalities budgeted into what they do. If they don't use it, it's, if they don't use it, it's okay. Some of them, I, I assume that some of them have done bonds, and they have money left over from the bonds that they can use for that. But it's just, it's, it's working through that. But, but again, council's done, I mean, staff's done a great job finding these, these matching grants and stuff. But to, to your point, if we don't have, if we don't have the matching funds, especially something, you know, pretty good size comes up that we can, we can bid for and go, go for, if it's not there, we, we lose it. We lose out. And again, to your point, it's money that we've already paid. It's just, who's, who's better prepared to get it back?
That's right. Because it's, it's gonna go to somebody, whether it's us or another municipality. But we've all paid the taxes already.
And I, and I, I believe.
You gotta pay to get it back.
I, I believe that the next time there's a, there's a town hall, maybe that's, that's an item of discussion for the community, and maybe then it gets, you know, kind of sent out to the community. Because we are losing out, because again, I think we're doing a good job not living on the margin. I think we're, I think we've kind of addressed that a little bit, and we're in a good place with that. But we still are not, we, we want to live as close to the margin as we can, and some things are going to, we're just gonna miss out on. And unless the public understands why there's, and it can be that, that the funds are there if we need to use them. If not, they're, they're just, they're in our unassigned fund balance. Because as long as we stick to, as long as we stick to the budget, the numbers are there. We can't hide from the numbers or run from the numbers. But if it's something that, that we budgeted for, and it's not used, but it's there in case we have to use it, we're in a better place. I don't think we've, I don't think we've addressed that as strongly as we probably should have.
As a finance director, I would have a really hard time turning down free money as well. And I, I would really try to avoid that at all costs. So you do have some funds that, for instance, we have a land acquisition fund that has just about $380,000 in it. So if we got a particular grant and our, you know, it was, we were gonna have to shell out some money, and I was sort of a little bit concerned that I couldn't at the moment because of this over here and this over here, there's no reason that I can't come to council and say, I'm gonna temporarily borrow from that fund that you have no plans of using that at the moment, and I can use it to pursue this grant, front it, when it comes back, put it right back in your land acquisition fund. So we can get creative, and we can definitely shift funds around to not miss out on opportunities and not lose free money and leave it on the table. But to a point, I can't magically find you $2 million, but I can probably find you something in, in reason, you know?
I mean, I, I mean, and that's, that's really good to know. But let's, let's, let's just, for example, take our, the Loop grant. And it was, how much was it? A million?
1.7 million.
1.7, and we matched it 40%, right?
Yes.
So could we do that type of grant?
Not without applying for possibly another grant to help cover some of our match, which is what we did for the Loop. Maybe not concurrently, maybe in a few years. But I wouldn't recommend trying to do it at the same time that we're currently in the middle of a large 1.7 million dollar matching grant.
So that's, that's my question.
So going forward, we have a land, what was it called?
Acquisition.
Acquisition. Does it make sense to put another bucket out to, for, for a grant and have it designated for that?
Yeah, you could certainly, you know, every year, the leftover funds that we have, which is our revenues that exceed expenditures, which every year you have some, because the staff runs very conservatively in their spending, and so does council. So we're, we, we always have a surplus, and we do save it. There's no reason why, after the audit, when you all hear what that number is, you can't collectively decide to make, take a portion of it and, and put it in a fund for matching grants or reimbursable grants and things like that, if you were to choose. Rather, or you, or you could just leave it as unassigned and just know that it's there. And if a grant opportunity comes up, then I would move it out of unassigned and move it to a reimbursable grant bucket when we needed it, so that we, we realize it's been allocated to that.
How big of a grant would you be willing to say, yep, I'll do that without having any rigmarole? Like, if you had to pull out a land acquisition, that's fine. But how mu, how big of a grant would you be, like, comfortable saying, yep, we can handle that, that's fine, without having to get any additional funding?
That's a tough one to answer without knowing what year it would, it would happen.
Well, I mean, most grants don't happen immediately. So let's just say in the next.
I would say 500,000 I would feel comfortable in the next couple of years.
And it's something certainly that we could address next year as well. So if we're talking about it being a couple of years, you know.
Yeah, but if a grant comes to us right now, and it's like, hey, we'll give you a million dollars to help with your roundabouts coming up, we're gonna have to say thanks, but yeah, we don't have the money to match it. That, that's, that's my, that's my only point.
I, I think she said there are ways that we could do that, maybe up to 300,000 or something like that.
It would depend on the, it would depend on the payment schedule for that. We could, we could potentially say, okay, as, because it's gonna be paid in phases, design and engineering right away, and then construction. So if we were to get that type of an offer, we, I would, that would buy me some time to save up for the big balloon payment that comes on construction. So I would, I would have a very hard time saying no to that money for, for that roundabout.
What's the average matching? Is it 100%, 25, 50, 40?
It depends. Were you guys?
I'd say somewhere between 40 and 60.
Okay, so, you know, a half a million dollars.
Lean into your mic. I'm, I've got people saying, lean in or pull closer to you. I've got people saying they can't hear you.
So then 300,000 would get us a million dollars hypothetically.
Hypothetically, maybe. On the higher end.
I would just maybe recommend, recommend that, I, I think we've kind of gone where, where we're at with this. Let's get this one, let's, but let's make it a priority in next year's budget to, to add that in it. Because we're losing out. We're just, we're losing out on free money. And, and again, with the, with the notion that if something does not come up, it, it's not used. But if something's there, we're available for it. We're, we're positioned to be taking advantage of, of what's there. That's my recommendation.
I mean, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. Like, I don't want to have to raise or lower taxes anymore than we have to, because that's really what we're doing right now, is lowering it. But I do want to kind of direct staff not to not look for grants. Like, keep looking, and if something comes up, I guess we'll just figure it out. But again, knowing that next year, council is gonna have to address the grant situation, because it's silly. It's really silly that we really have never done grants up until a number of years ago. Like, really silly, so.
So if you all don't have any more questions about this budget that's being presented and this tax rate that we landed at in order to accomplish this council's goals for this fiscal year, then I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we are ready for them to sort of approve this, and then we'll go ahead and get that, the budget, the call for the public hearing and the, the publication, and we'll move forward with the next steps to have it officially adopted at the meeting at the end of this month.
And the budget message is, is in front of you. We've got to make a couple of tweaks to it. Oh, sorry. We have the budget message ready. We'll make a couple tweaks to it. And if you guys are okay, we'll get that published out this week or beginning of next week.
Okay. Any more questions from the council? Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, adjourn the Village Council Budget Work Session Meeting at 5:47 PM.
Are we not approving?
No, we're not voting on the.
I thought she said.
Did you want us to? We're not approving the budget tonight.
There's no vote on the budget tonight.
Yeah, we, as, as long as we have consensus, we know.
Oh, sorry.
That's for adjournment.
Consensus. I think everybody said consensus, so.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to adjourn.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
I was like, we're not voting on the budget tonight.
All right, so we'll start. The regular meeting will be in 10 minutes.
10 minutes, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open up the village council regular meeting, May 13th, 2025. I showed the time, 6 o'clock, I shall, we have a full quorum, so we are ready to go. First up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions, subtractions?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next up, adoption of the previous minutes. Everyone have a chance to get a look at those?
I did. I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion to adopt the minutes from 4/8/25 budget work session and 4/8/25 regular as presented.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Next up, we have pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Sorry, Jamie, I got there too quick. Didn't give you a chance to get up. Next up, we have public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yep. First up, and the only person signed up is Ron Hamel, 3219 Oakbrook Drive. Ron, if you'll just hit that button.
Okay. Just turn that on and give you three minutes. Kim will do the timing, so.
Hello, Ron Hamel, 3219 Oakbrook. I wanted to take a closer look at the deputy's report, which he'll be talking about in a few minutes, maybe. Marvin Road, let's talk about that one first. 246,000 vehicles. The speed limit between 46 and 50 miles per hour has been 40,000 people going that speed. 51 to 55, 7,597. 56 to 60 miles per hour, 836 vehicles. 61 to 65, 174 vehicles. 66 to 70, 40 vehicles. Over 71 miles per hour, 19 vehicles. This is just between the roundabout and to where the sign is before Philthorne. So that is a problem. So I don't think that putting streetlights along the sides gonna help. I think that's just gonna make them go even faster. You can ask the deputy, see what he thinks about that. Big speed bump might help. That would really slow you down. Marvin School Road, same problem. That was 111,000 cars going down through there. And as you can look on the report that the deputy has nicely put on in there and on the agenda from Mr. Yao, the same scenarios with Waxahol Marvin Road, we have, from Viking, we have 141,775 vehicles. Most of them are coming from, say Waxahol and South Carolina. Waxahol Marvin, near Stacy. That traffic has increased to 233,640 vehicles. From the Jones Clearcut area, coming from South Carolina, we have 86,653 cars going between 40 and 68 miles per hour coming from South Carolina, according to the trailer. Thank you very much. Just wanted you to keep an eye on that and see what we could do. Like I say, maybe a big speed bump.
Wish it could be that easy, but thank you. All right, next up, do we have anyone else?
Nope, no one else signed up.
Okay. Give me a sec here and get back to my... All right. Feedback, next up, we have feedback from the previous public comment period. Does anyone have something for that?
So, yeah, I've got a couple of things that people have been bringing to my attention. So there are public comments that have been made out in the public and brought to my attention. So a lot of, well, one thing that I was told was that staff is being dinged on, and council, is that we would get more done if Village Hall were open for more than 16 hours per week. So just so the public knows that yes, our office hours are 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. That does not mean that staff is not working. That does not mean that staff cannot meet with you. So I know that people have said, let's put a for sale sign in front of it, but I'm not sure that that's really what we need to be doing. So if people need to make appointments, staff is here. Christina, how many hours did staff work the last pay period?
I've got a printout here.
Because it's certainly not 16 hours.
Total hours worked, our payroll is in two-week increments.
All right, two weeks.
It's like a total of hours worked and that two-week increment was 842.
And how many full-time staff do we have?
Nine.
All right, so... Yeah, I can't do math in my head. All right.
That's pretty close to 100 hours.
So that's about 100 hours.
100 hours in two weeks.
Okay. So for those of the public who is concerned about that, then you shouldn't be because staff is working. Whether the doors are unlocked or not, people are here working. And if you need to get in the building because you need to make an appointment, please do so. Council's happy to come in and meet with you also. There's also a lot of developer collusion, HOA collusion going on, council's getting their back scratched. My husband has put this out there before. I'm gonna put it out there again. If anybody in the community would like to pick an audit firm to come in and audit me personally, I'm pretty sure all of council would agree to it as well, pick an audit firm. I'll pay for it. But when nothing comes back, then you have to come in here and say, I'm just touting misinformation. So all of this stuff...
And pay for it? They get to pay for it if it comes back?
I'll pay for it. I'll pay for it. I'll pay for it.
Gotta be a steeper consequence.
Yeah.
Saying I'm sorry falls on deaf ears.
So demanding real transparency is what I've been hearing. So this is real transparency. Pick an audit firm. I don't care who it is. I'll pay for it. But unless you have actual proof of collusion, of developer wrongdoing, homeowner board wrongdoing, unless you have actual physical evidence, it's really detrimental to reputations out there because again, I'm willing to open up my books. Is everybody else in the village willing to do that? I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I would have, to Jamie's point, I'd have more consequences placed on the end of that when everything comes back. But yeah, words matter. People say things and we get that a lot of time and I just kind of scratch my head and wonder where it's coming from, but...
And just remember, because I hear a lot about, I can't wait for November. So whoever runs, just remember that if you get on council, people are gonna be saying the same thing about you guys too. So just remember that.
Yeah. Those people that usually complain don't run for office. They just rather complain. So, but we'll look forward to the upcoming election. Next up, we have a signing ceremony for, I mean, for mayor proclamation proclaiming May 18th through May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclaiming May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, advancing quality for life, of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to the sustainability and resilient communities and to the public high quality of life and well-being of the people of the village of Marvin. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures. water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Village of Marvin to gain knowledge and of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Joseph E. Polino, Jr., Mayor of the Village of Marvin, do hereby designate the week May eighteen through twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Marvin to be affixed this thirteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-five. I'll go ahead and sign that.
Should we clap?
You can clap if you'd like.
It's Public Works Week? I want to clap for Public Works.
Good job. Very well. Next up, we have the presentation of the certificate to village clerk and assistant to the manager, Austin Yao, in recognition of achieving the Paul... Hold on here. The Paul Craig Athenian Fellowship from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, IIMC. Here we go. The Athenians were leaders who invented the idea of political democracy, philosophy, logic, and rhetoric. They left the world enriched with their ideas. The choice of Athenian and the title of the leadership society signals the value of this culture from twenty-five hundred years ago. To be a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow is to hold the knowledge and the quest for knowledge in high esteem. Municipal clerks, at their best, exemplify Athenian values. The Education Department is pleased to announce that you have fulfilled all of their requirements to become a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow and have accepted you as a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow in the Athenian Leadership Society. So congratulations on that. Austin? And I'll go ahead and read... Yes, I gotta read this. A little early. Athenian Leadership Society, Paul Craig Athenian Fellow. The Athenian Leadership Society is an international academy for and municipal clerks worldwide. The society was established in two thousand five to recognize and honor municipal clerks who seek personal and professional improvement as Athenian leaders, lead leaders in their chosen profession. The highest achievement for society members is to be inducted as a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow with all rights, privileges, and recognition bestowed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. By these hands and with this seal, we welcome you to the academy extending the prestige and recognition as a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow of the Athenian Leadership Society to Austin Yao, CMC, Village of Marvin, North Carolina, inducted the tenth day of April in the year two thousand twenty-five. Congrats, Austin.
Very much, yeah. Thank you. Great job. Good job. Thank you.
Do you want a better picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get a picture.
Formal picture.
Go up in the middle and get a picture. Why don't you...
I make a motion that we give the Public Works Department and Austin Yao a week off with pay. Looking out for you.
Great job. We are very fortunate, if you don't know, we have a clerk in Austin. We are very fortunate to have him. Thank you, Austin.
Yes, we are very fortunate to have Austin. We don't want him going anywhere.
If anyone's listening.
We'll call Paul Craig.
All right. Next up, we have the presentation of Union County Critical Intersection Phase Three Designs and Cost Estimates. Okay. Sorry. That's you?
Good evening, council. As they get this pulled up, just got a quick presentation for you guys regarding the two intersections that you guys approved to be a part of this grant and partner with the county. The critical intersection, the county as well as the village and, what, three other municipalities? Four? Three, four? All were submitted, submitted intersections. The village had two, those intersections being Waxahol Marvin Road and Stacy Howie, as well as Marvin Road and Joe Carr. The, we selected a firm to do the design of proposed alternatives, as well as the cost estimates. We're gonna go through that tonight in the process. And then looking for council just to basically give us direction. There's some motions already in, in eScribe regarding which proposed and preferred alternative you guys would like to be, or would like to see, so they can then get that incorporated into the plan. It's not working.
We are having technical difficulties. I don't know if our screen share just went down, but give me one second, see if I can get it back.
It's fidgety.
Uh, it is. Okay. It is not wanting to work right now for some reason. You see the work on mine? It might be your computer. Glasses. Yeah. Can I tell you where it is? I can't see the bottom. Apologies for the delay. Planner. Project. Sorry. In the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. All of them. It's all right. Can't control that.
Oh, we up?
Just tell, tell me when to advance it.
Go ahead.
It's not gonna be able to work.
Yep. All right. So as kind of mentioned, once again, just a little project background, the county, this is the third phase of this program. As mentioned, there were six intersections in total. The village had the two that I previously mentioned. Go ahead to the next one. I'm not gonna go in depth. So the process began last year, and then the, RKNK was the selected firm that did the design for the two intersections, as well as the cost estimate. We did, they proposed that to the committee back in February and March, and then the committee, which I made up myself, and then representatives from those other municipalities, as well as Bjorn, and representatives from NCDOT and CRTPO, basically all gave their feedback on those alternatives back in, or April, was it the end of April, I believe? We had the public outreach meetings for both of the intersections, and so I'll kind of get into the findings from that. We did have good feedback on the survey, as well as participation in both of those meetings. Next slide. Do you want me to go through the background of all this? Like of how all the data was created? Do you want me to get to the proposals, just for sake of time?
Design year doesn't mean that's the year it's gonna be built, right?
Yes. Well, no, no. So the design year, so I'll hit on this real quick. So part of their, the, what RKNK did is they got traffic data counts for this past year. They developed appropriate traffic growth models, as well as during their design, and they designed this to withstand, it has to be to twenty fifty, meaning that it's not going to fail before twenty fifty, and that's taking into account the current traffic pattern, future growth, growth rates. So that's all the background data that goes into their initial, of their proposed designs. Go to the next slide. So once again, they analyzed the intersection. They started by obviously using, what? Keep going? Okay. It's gonna mention public outreach. We had the, the two, the public meetings that were combined. The survey was opened the month of March, as well as the county, the county has a story, story map website that has all this information on there. That's a very good resource to kind of get the background data, look at the proposed alternatives. Go to the next slide. And so tonight, once again, we're here to, for the council to give, give direction on the proposed design, as we kind of were discussing in the budget meeting. Once this is all finalized and the report's completed in June, you know, this will give us the tools to go for the call for projects this fall. If the council is open to, to potential funding match for the, for either both projects, or at least one, if we want to get that submitted. And once again, it takes generally three to four years from when the project's approved and funded to completion of construction. Next slide. Okay. So first intersection being Joe Carr Road and Marvin. Next slide. It's gonna existing conditions. I mean, we, we've heard about this intersection for a while. The intersection's not, no turn lanes, just two, two-way eastbound, or two-way lanes. There has been twenty-nine crashes recorded between July nineteen and June twenty twenty-four, and the AM peak hours are roughly thirteen, fourteen hundred cars, and PM peak hours are a little over fifteen hundred per cars. There is no current pedestrian accommodations, but this is kind of in the, along the routing of the completion of the Marvin Loop that's currently not funded as well. Next slide. So they looked at a couple of alternatives, essentially based off of the right-of-way constraints. It's in that, in that location, you got Firethorn on one side, then you have the sage at Marvin and an individual property owner. Just based off of the current right-of-way and the right-of-way needed, certain improvements were kind of ruled out. So you get to where we, the proposed signal interchange in the right-of-way, or sorry, this proposed signal interchange in the roundabout. The other thing is, the proposed roundabout is a double-lane roundabout, and that's because a single-lane roundabout would fail, per the, the data and their modeling, prior to the twenty fifty horizon year. Next slide. So the first proposed alternative is just a traffic signal. You have dedicated turn, turn lanes at all intersections. It does, this, this design also does incorporate in our multi-use path there. And that's just kind of a general location. Obviously, we haven't decided on if it's going to be on the, the left or right side, but it is, it is estimated in the cost estimate for part of that construction. Next slide. Alternative number two is a roundabout approach. Once again, this would be kind of utilizing some of the existing right-of-way that was secured as part of the sage at Marvin final plot approval. It is a double-lane roundabout. It also doesn't then incorporate in the multi-use path as well. Next slide. So then getting into the, the differences of the two, one's obviously gonna be cost, and I'll talk about that here in a sec. The signaled interchange would have less of an impact regarding right-of-way and construction and long-term maintenance, but the overall efficiency of the roundabout for safety, as well as travel movement, is, is higher. Next slide. So we'll get to the biggest thing that everybody wants to know, the cost. So here's a breakdown of the two costs. So in these cost estimates, they, once again, take in the three phases. Your preliminary engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. They also have that total project cost estimated for current numbers, as well as based off of inflation for twenty thirty. So based off the twenty thirty numbers, for a signaled interchange would be roughly three point nine million, and for the roundabout project, it would be seven point one million. Once again, we would go for funding here, which would require at least a minimum of a twenty percent match. So you'd be looking at, for the roundabout option, estimated about a one point four million dollar match on that. Any questions on that? Next slide.
So, all right. So I have, I have a question. I'm probably just gonna be told it's just the way it is, but... So Waxahol Marvin Road, roundabout, handles the same amount of cars, no problems out there. Why do we need double lanes over here? There's not as many cars on Marvin Road as there are on Newtown and Waxahol Marvin. It's not gonna fail out here anytime soon, even though they did get acquisition of land to be able to add it, but they're not, they don't have any plans of adding a second lane to that. I feel like, and there are a lot of other people in this village that, that didn't like the two-lane option for the Stacy Howie. Why is it two lanes? I think that's, that's just looking for trouble. There's gonna cause accidents in that intersection. There's not enough, because you're, basically, you're just putting a double lane in the, in the roundabout coming off of a single-lane road, both ways. So all that does is encourage people to try to pass each other in the roundabout, and causes problems. That's, and it's also a lot more cost. You got a seven million dollar project here because of double lanes. That's, I mean, you know, state makes these decisions, I guess, and whatever, but they make decisions based on cost all the time, too. And do we not have a say in this as to, you know, because we have to foot the bill?
So, and Bjorn, I'll let you, correct me if I'm wrong here, but one, since the single lane, based off the modeling, basically failed, it wasn't recommended because essentially that would hurt our, our chance to get funded, because DOT is not going to fund a project that's necessarily not going to last? Is that kind of fair to say? And, and so, once again, it's one of those things, so they, they, they look at these designs, the single lane would fail, and so this is what was proposed from, from the consultant regarding, like I said, the current traffic numbers, the projected growth models, to withstand the twenty fifty year, to make sure that it's going to last.
So are they planning on making Marvin Road a four-lane? Because, I mean, if the, if it's a four-lane traffic circle, how's it gonna accommodate any more traffic than what fits on a two-lane road?
It's, I mean, it's still just daily, daily count numbers.
I mean, I just, it doesn't make sense to me, the, you know, spending the extra money for something that's just gonna be confusing, because you're, all you're doing is opening opportunities for people to, to make foolish decisions and do risky things in a traffic circle. So I just feel like that there should be some, some way for us to have some kind of input on this. I mean, I know state DOT is God, but there should be some kind of, some way that we can input into this, because this kind of, of a traffic circle does not work for what we're doing here. It's gonna cause problems. I will guarantee it.
I'm curious, I'm curious on the counts over on Community House by the YMCA. They have two single-lane roundabouts there that look nice, encourages people to slow down, which we had someone just complaining about how fast everyone's going. So that, wouldn't that incentivize if you're coming down to, you know, a single lane that's, that's turning? It's, I mean, in, it's, again, there are questions you may not have the answer for.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily, I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm not a traffic engineer, and, you know, once again, I, I think where they look at these is DOT is always gonna be looking at making sure that the traffic is flowing. That's gonna be, and then say, safety goes into that as well. And so that's kind of how they derive, I mean, RKNK, the consultant, obviously is using, I mean, like, we had a representative from DOT on the committee, and so all of that goes into their, to their proposed designs. You know, it, I'm not sure. I, I asked the question, and once again, just because their modeling has it failing is the reason why the single lane was not proposed as an alternative.
I thought the, you know, meeting was very interesting, very enlightening. I'm not, none of us are traffic experts. These folks were. With the closure, close of, the closure of Pacer, I have found myself coming up and having to turn left on Marvin Road various times, almost impossible. And people are shooting from Union, from Mecklenburg County down Marvin Road. And I know when we talked about this lightly last month, I'm wondering about a traffic light. They said that it's just as effective. Obviously, you can see the cost. I understand that, you know, it's gonna back up traffic. I don't know why we're making it convenient for people to fly through Marvin. If we're up to me, we still have three stop signs at Marvin and Newtown, but that's another story. Discouragement, discouragement. If we put in a stoplight, people could at least turn left. But most importantly, yeah, people have to find an alternative route. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but people find, why shoot down Marvin and allow them to go as fast as they're going? If there's a traffic light there, that's gonna prevent it. But, I mean, just a thought.
I said, the, the roundabouts have been, have worked here in Marvin, and that's why, if, one, if you're looking at this slide, so this is, once again, the comparison between the signal... so this is once again, the comparison between the signal, traffic signaled, um, alternative in the roundabout. They're both obviously improving the safety performance and, and, and traffic flow. Uh, you do have a, obviously a difference in, um, the right-of-way and utility impacts as well as the main, construction and maintenance. Roundabout's going to be, uh, higher to maintain as well as a lot more to construct. You know, that's why we're doing this is like, council hat, I mean, we can make that determination tonight on which alternative you guys are preferring. The public, based off the survey, um, and the response from, uh, the public meetings was that the roundabout was preferred. Uh, it was a 75% compared to a 9% preferred for a signaled interchange. And that was off of 100 responses. It's again, it's not Apple's app, I mean, but, you know, going off the public feedback that was received on top of staff input, what, and looking at what the village has done in the past with roundabout construction. That's why it is the recommended, um, alternative, uh, for both intersections.
I mean, I could see the, the roundabout. I can, you know, one thing that I was just thinking about as I'm sitting here looking back here and I see Lieutenant May sitting back there, and I'm thinking, emergency services. So what happens when they're trying to respond through an intersection when you got a, a traffic light and you got cars backed up 25 deep? And they're trying to make their way through. Traffic circles keep the traffic moving. Emergency vehicles can traverse these things a lot safer and a lot quicker, um, through heavy traffic, especially on these two-lane roads with these roundabouts. So I, I understand the whole thing about the roundabout. I think it really makes sense to have roundabouts versus traffic lights. They're safer, safer. They do slow traffic down and they make it easier for emergency vehicles to get around. But I just, I still can't wrap my head around having to do the extra lanes when we already, we just, we don't have capacity on the regular road for that. So I just see potential for, and I, and I've been almost sideswiped in Whi, in Weddington in their traffic circle by somebody cutting through the two lanes and getting into my lane, you know? And I've had it almost happen out here and it's, so when you've got the two lanes, you know, it creates an opportunity for people to try to pass and do all these other crazy things. So I, I just, you know, I understand like the one out here is kind of a hybrid, right? So you've got the one that's, that stays right to get onto Waxaw Marvin Road. You don't have crossovers there. But if you have two through lanes, then you do have that. So I don't know. I just, that's, just from observing how people drive and, and all these, I, I see the pitfalls.
I'm assuming you came up to say something, so if it's okay with the council, we'll have Bjorn save you.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for, uh, allowing me to speak. I presented to the Village of Wesley Chapel last night on their intersection where it was a very similar dynamic. And in fact, last fall, we had also had another project that we talked about. It was the same type of situation of a roundabout versus signalized intersection. And in fact, in Wesley Chapel last fall, it was the opposite. They had a dual-lane roundabout that was previously funded at, uh, 84 and Potter by Wesley Chapel Elementary. And that intersection was deemed before they even went to construction, the NC DOT said, this isn't going to work. Had to go back. We all had to put in more money, go to CARPO, get it funded for an exotic, uh, it's called a bowtie intersection where you can't make any left turns at the intersection. You have to take a right, do a 180 upstream and then come back to make your left because the roundabout wasn't going to work. So what's funny is five, six, seven years ago, all we ever heard was, we hate roundabouts, we hate roundabouts. And then now, in the current public engagement, uh, processes we go through, unsolicited, people are like, you should put a roundabout there. And now because situations are exceeding what a roundabout can effectively, um, serve, you have to go sometimes beyond a roundabout or to a very large roundabout. And, you know, you had the similar, similar situation to this near the Weddington Town Hall where it was the two-lane. A lot of people were merging, uh, going through it. I don't think it was exactly the same situation as this. But again, it was a larger roundabout and they had to stripe it back to a single lane because of those merging issues. I'm, I, I get that. But the, uh, the situation at this location was that it was so peaky, there were such high amounts at the peak hour that more capacity was needed than what a single lane would accommodate. And I, I drive through the, the roundabouts on Newtown as well, and they're already starting to get backed up at certain periods. They've only been open a few years. These designs going out 20 years with 2% growth per year, um, it really compounds quickly. And that's why we had to look at designs like this. But to say that this design is being pushed down your throat, that is absolutely not the case. The, the reason why this program exists in Union County is so that the municipalities and the counties and the county have a say in what gets designed. It's not the case where the DOT is putting a design in front of us. There are options and, uh, the lower cost one is the signal. The public recommended the roundabout, um, based on looking at all of those considerations at the roundtable, including the consultants, including municipal staff, uh, including DOT staff. They said, okay, well, we'll, we'll recommend the roundabout based on this feedback. But it is up to you and the Board of Commissioners to come up with a design. Board of Commissioners has never gone against what a municipality has, has, um, proposed. That's why we're going last, so we can hear from everyone. And almost always the recommendation is, well, we agree with what they're doing. So you really set the stage here. And if you need time to work on it to, to make a decision, that's okay. But, um, there's the instance of 16 and 75 in Waxaw several years ago where they had a couple of options. One was move traffic as much as possible, which meant take away a lot of the on-street parking and really harm the downtown character. The other was do the best you can, but do no harm to the downtown character. And they didn't know what to do, so they punted. They didn't select either. And there's, there's not a project at that location and maybe that's okay. But, um, that's an outcome as well. If, if you say, well, we, we don't like either of these, you could say that, and that can be an outcome from this process. But we're giving you options at this, um, location.
So when, when you say that they look for feedback from both the county, would it be appropriate to provide feedback to say, hey, can we look at the single lane roundabout versus the double roundabout?
That's already been done.
Yeah, DOT has already decided that.
And that's already ruled out.
So we get two options or nothing. That's the box.
You have three. You could say, you could say one, the other or neither. Or, or four, you could say, we like both. Um, so that, that's, that's the options that's available at this time.
And I'm assuming when we get to the Stacy Howie one, is that a single lane roundabout, I'm assuming?
It's the same thing.
It's big as well.
Or that's double as well? Because that, that's what I don't quite understand, because we've got these other ones that by and large are single. The, the, the Waxall Marvin, um, Bonds Grove, that's single or double?
Bonds Grove, it's.
I honestly don't remember.
I'm pretty sure it's single.
Because, you know, by and large, it's the same traffic that's going through all of these, you know?
Sure. If we, selecting the roundabout as a proposed alternative and we go for funding, I mean, like where we're at right now with the, um, Waxall Marvin and Bonds Grove, like, there may, is there ever, do you ever see that they'll scale it back? If they see, when we actually get into the actual engineering and design of it?
If there's efficiencies to be gained, but I don't think it's to cut capacity necessarily.
So, like I said, and that's what's hard about these projects is like, when we do these plannings, we're trying to, you know, estimate and plan out as far ahead for growth and so that these things last instead of, because it does take four to five years to construct. Sometimes takes longer depending on if we get funded. And so therefore, the goal of this is obviously get them funded, get them done. And, and, uh, but if not, you know, obviously data changes, uh, traffic changes, growth or population changes. And that's what makes some of these obsolete, because basically if we don't go for funding in the next five years of this, these are pretty much null and void, aren't they? Isn't it five-year?
No, no, they, they would have to be refreshed. Now, of course, the, the data might change that caused you to have to reevaluate it, which is in fact what's happening at the intersection of Rogers and Wesley Chapel Stouts near, uh, the Sun Valley High School cluster. They had a design done in 2016. They're currently revisiting it as part of this group of six projects. So yeah, I would say after six, seven years, you probably do need to revisit it.
Refresh my memory, why, we were at one point, um, talking about a no-left turn coming out from South Carolina.
That was a, that was a temporary fix.
I know, but I'm looking for a, a long fix and, and, and move this problem down to Lancaster where everyone would be coming out the backside of this.
I personally think the, the no-left turn is, yeah, it's a temporary fix of that. I think it's, once you start shifting traffic somewhere else, it causes an issue somewhere else. And what I foresee, and we even, I mean, we got to complain about this today, people cutting through Broadmoor. Like, so it, there, you know, regardless of, if you try, if you're trying to fix something, sometimes it's, it's going to make traffic then go somewhere else. Because the traffic's still coming through the Marvin area in one way or another. We fix these roundabouts and so, yeah, and that's why these intersections now are where they're at is because we have more efficient intersections that have already been improved and that these are the ones that are, are not.
I mean, we're looking at. No, I, I want to, because if you looked at the cost estimates, it's $10 million for that. We need to motion to open up the budget again.
Well, once again, all, all, all we are doing tonight is basically council has given direction on their preferred alternatives. This is not commit, we're not, go, have not made the decision to go for funding at this time. This is just, hey, these are the alternative. Yes, we don't want this to just sit on the shelf and be wasted, uh, money that we invested in as part of this plan. But it's, we're not necessarily committing ourselves to funding this project tonight.
So, because roundabouts are typically safer than a red light. And that is what the majority of.
Thank you, Bjorn.
Thanks, Bjorn. And most of the people of the respondents said that they preferred overwhelmingly a roundabout versus a stoplight.
They didn't prefer it, they asked for it.
So if, if you want my feedback, my feedback is two roundabouts. I, it, option three and four are not options. So, and again, roundabouts are safer, so I say two roundabouts.
I'm, I'm all for the roundabouts. I just, I just feel like it's excess and it's waste to do a two, a double lane roundabout at these intersections.
They're going to say, okay, we're going to move on.
I know, I'm just, I'm just stating my, my opinion.
So when we go, I mean, all, all these are.
I don't think you're wrong. I'm just saying, but I'm not an engineer, so.
The way that these are designed and these cost estimates, it helps the village opportunity to get funding, uh, to get funded through CRTPO. And, you know, once again, designing something that's not going to, uh, that's going to fail, that's not, that one, it's either not going to get funded or definitely going to hurt our chances at getting funded. So do, do you want me to go through Stacy House, Wax? I mean, once again, both alternatives are the same. The price for the, uh, roundabout for, um, Stacy Howie and Waxall Marvin is a little higher. It's roughly 10 million. It's projected, uh, at 2030, which would be a, uh, $2 million match, uh, local match. Once again, same, we looked at the signaled interchange, uh, on both. And the pub, based off the public feedback for this intersection as well, it does, uh, was a roundabout.
I, I have to ask this question. It was going to be something I said in council comments, but how is it that NC DOT, CRTPO, what are all these things, are expecting municipalities to come up with approximately a third, maybe more? When that's more than our whole budget?
Planning. I mean.
I'm sorry?
Plan, planning.
Well, I mean.
I mean, the, you have, you have like the discretionary funding and then you have the prior, I mean, you have planning, um, part of that, like, and I, I think I mentioned this at either the previous council meeting or at least to, um, some council members in passing. Like something that I want to start doing, especially as we're talking about long-term and planning for going for funding for, if it's intersection improvements or grants, is trying to go ahead and start building that in that, the capital improvements plan where we can start making sure money's allocated and at least have something already banked up for when we go for funding. And then, once we actually know the number, we keep budgeting board for that.
I have an answer. I was going to save it for the council comments, but Bjorn, if you think I'm crazy, maybe you think I am. But, um, why not we get the state legislatures to take all those unincorporated areas that are not part of a municipality and refuse to be and put the tax on them to, to, to fund it? And this will encourage them to become part of our community and then our, we, we'd be able to maybe fund these budgets for, for something like that, so.
Well, in some, Bjorn, and once again, correct me if I'm wrong, but. You know, we have up to, once again, it's up to the county commissioners on funding the, uh, the critical intersection, um, fund. But once again, we partnered with the county to share that local match to overall bring down our cost for the intersection at Waxall Marvin and Bonds Grove. And if the county commissioners keep funding that, that is an opportunity to, in the future, to partner with the county to bring down that overall cost that we are, uh, the village would be paying for the local match. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, so I would, two, two additional things. One, these cost estimates are a lot higher than previous cycles would have been because CARPO did two things to try and lower the need for shortfall funds because of overruns like what happened at Marvin and Newtown. So what they've done is, one, they now put a 40% contingency on the entire cost of the project from design to right-of-way acquisition to utility relocation to construction, 40% is added automatically. Second is, you now have to inflate your cost to the year of expenditure. Not in 2025 when you apply, but in 2030 when you're doing most of your work to actually build it. So that means you're adding 3% per year, say, uh, on average. So that's adding to the cost. The benefit is that you may not have shortfall requests. Or that if the cost is less, you're actually having to spend less. You're just spending what was actually expended, which is a good thing. The other thing, the comment about, uh, the, the cost of the local match in particular being more than some municipality's budget, I agree with you 100%. And I bring up the example of 75 and Potter and Mineral Springs where the railroad tracks are. That was one of our critical intersections four years ago. The, the local share was like, for a 20% of that project was like double their annual budget, maybe even more. And we brought that up to CARPO and said, this is unfair to expect municipalities to improve NC highways with Class 1 railroad implications for the, for the complexity of the project. These should be considered in the long-range plan, the MTP, which you're going to, um, participate in, uh, in releasing to the public in the coming weeks. And they agreed, so now intersections can be submitted. The downside is, if you're going to submit it for NC DOT to do on their own through the long-range planning process, you're willing to wait 15 to 20 years. And in a situation like this, we were, we sat at that intersection several weeks ago with the representative of the HOA to deal with their gate issue, which has recently made things a little more complicated. It is hairy. It's a problem now. And when the, when the, and when the, uh, target and the cost go open, it's only going to get worse. So, yeah, these are, these, we picked good locations in the sense that they are competitive projects. But we picked bad locations in the sense that there's already a problem there, and that's, that's what we're dealing with.
Well, we know that there's problems here. It's just about, it's about funding it. That's the, I mean, you know, these are, these are huge numbers for us.
Yeah.
I mean, we're looking at $3.5 million on these two projects right now. And that's not including the almost $900,000 that we're putting into Bonds Grove, which has got to come out first. I mean, these are astronomical, astronomical numbers for a, a village of our size with our tax rate. And, you know, we've sat here and we have crunched and crunched and crunched to try to get as tight on our budget as we possibly can. And these numbers are, are blowing our budget completely out of the world. So I, I don't know how we're going to fund, well, these projects. I mean, because we're talking construction in 2030 is what they're, these are projected for and, and that's five years from now. We can't budget this in five years. I don't know where we're going to get $4 million in five years.
Kim just made a great point. We're doing this for Stacy Howie and that whole neighborhood is not Marvin.
Correct, so once again.
It's like, it makes no sense.
Once again, we are not committing funding.
I know.
Right now, this is, we, we part, we, we are part of this program to get these design and cost estimates to allow us the opportunity to go for funding, uh, to get these projects done sooner rather than later. At the end of the day, this council, our future council, we don't have to necessarily, as Bjorn was mentioning, do anything. We're trying to be proactive on addressing the issues that are currently here as well as, once again, these are designed for future. And, and yeah, like we, we met with representatives of PDS, like, there's going to be certain aspects of that, that, like, gate, I mean, certain costs, like with the gate relocation and other stuff that, I mean, they're going to have to, uh, be willing. and other stuff, that, I mean, they're going to have to be willing to participate either in paying or at least giving it up, I mean, something along those lines of what we kind of discussed. So, it's going, all we're looking at today is whatever preferred alternative, if it's the roundabout, or if you guys want to go with the preferred cheaper option of the signal interchange, that then just allows the county to get it in the plan, and then we can go from there, once we just, if the village decides to go for funding in the fall.
What's the, what's the cost on the traffic lights? I mean, what are we saving here?
For Stacy Howey and Waxell Marvin, it's 6 million compared to 10. And, once again, from the, kind of look at, at the safety and performance, I mean, it's, roundabout performance better, but it's, but the signal interchange still meets DOT's criteria.
Now, quick question, Bjorn, for you, if there aren't 40% and 3%, all those numbers you talked about, if it comes back to, we didn't have to spend that money, do we get funding back to us?
The short end is, I mean, we just don't spend it because it's a reimbursement. So, it's basically, whatever the actual cost is, we get reimbursed, what, 80%, I guess? If it's a 20% match? Is, well, no, not this one, this would be a 20% match.
The NC DOT is going to administer it, so they're going to invoice us for our share of the engineering of the right-of-way of the construction phases, and if it turns out that what was needed was less than what was budgeted initially, then we, you and potentially the county, spend less.
But in the past, they had our money for that one roundabout for years, NC DOT.
Yeah, we don't do that, it's different now.
So, is the county ponying up for the Stacy Howey one, since that, like, half of it's in Union County unincorporated?
There's been no proposal to submit a grant application, so they haven't, they haven't been asked that question. But it's eligible, and in every single instance that municipality or the NC DOT has proposed a project, and we've been asked to contribute funds, we have.
Because, I mean, that's, that's a, I mean, that's a third of that intersection.
I will also say our budget is $300,000 per year, and we cover the entire county, so it's a lot of money.
We better get, we should best start asking now and often.
So, once, I mean, that, once the, once this project gets wrapped up, that's on that, if council wants, then staff can work with Bjorn, I mean, you guys adopt your budget, I mean, and look and see if that opportunity's there and make that request to the county.
I doubt it's going to be available for this fall, because we've contributed a lot the last couple of cycles. Realistically, we'd look for applications in the fall of '26. Would you, requesting money from us?
Okay.
So, with that being said, there's two motions in your guys' eScribe. It's a motion for each intersection. Once again, and preferred alternative number two is the roundabout, and preferred alternative number one is the signal interchange. So, basically, the motion just needs to state what preferred alternative for, that you guys select for each intersection.
We'll look, come to consensus before we...
Yeah. Where's everyone at, just going across around the board?
Well, I guess I'm wondering if we need to prioritize one first above the other, or whether we do both, regardless of whether it's a signal or a roundabout. You know, and we've got to consider what we think we can handle financially.
We can't handle either one of them financially.
Well, we, over, over time, we can, because you're talking about that being six, seven years.
We're talking five, five years, five years, 2030. This is, this is what was on the screen, 2030. We can't, I mean, this is Bonds Grove, Stacy Howey, and Joe Carr, all within the next five years. So, that's a, that's, that's four...
You know, realistically, these two are going to get pushed.
We've been working on the Bonds Grove one for years, though, already.
That's my point. Realistically, these two are going to get...
Like I said, it's up to when we go for funding.
But even if you just push it out seven years, we still have to come up with $4 million in seven years.
Okay, that's not, Hunter doesn't, we don't need to figure out how to fund it today. This is what I was talking about, last budget meeting, this budget meeting, I got ripped a new one because, you know, oh, every, the ballot, the budget was balanced, and then Kim has to bring up, you know, long-term planning. Well, this is the reason, because there are issues that come up. So, Hunter needs an answer. It doesn't mean that we have to participate when they come back, he just needs to know so we can go back to the county and say, these are the two options that we like, and once then they start the next process, then we can decide how we're going to pay for it and how we're going to fund it. But again, this is what I was talking about.
And, once again, if you guys like both, I mean, you can do, that you prefer, I mean, either one.
I prefer the roundabout, no question. I mean, in some circumstances, there's no T-bone type situation where over at Joe Carr, or possibly the other one, but I still, I think it flows better regardless of the cost, which I may reconsider when I do for the rest of my life and build intersections.
Well, and what you see with the signals even, is it just starts to back up so much.
Well, people start running red lights because they don't want to wait, and then they're going to...
And then they give T-bones, ready to get killed.
Yeah, and this is, this is the whole thing. So, I mean, I...
I'm for roundabouts, okay.
I'm just trying to figure out how I'm going to pay for it.
Roundabout?
We better start working.
Bob?
Yeah, I'll go roundabout. I like the traffic light and stop sign, but, yeah, I'll go roundabout.
Bob, I think you should go out there with a stop sign.
I know, I'm going to go out there. Direct traffic.
That's what council should start doing, we'll take shifts.
I'm going to be out there with my little outfit, and I'm going to say, stop, okay? Now, you can go.
We're going to start taking shifts together.
Bob, you have bad luck.
James, I'll be off your back, okay? I'll be out there.
So, you on the roundabout, I thought they was safer. Except for you, right?
No, 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 I know for a fact that the Highway Patrol, Motor Pool, basically says they're called circles of death. Just saying.
So, Wayne, where you at?
Roundabout?
Turn on your microphone.
Roundabout.
Thank you.
Jamie?
One thing I think we also want to point out, though, too, because this is something that I've heard with a lot of the hubbub that's been going on around in the community, and it's, it's whether it's people that are in Marvin, or people that are outside of Marvin that continue to say, well, what does Marvin do for us? You know?
It's roundabouts.
And what Marvin already has done has made the traffic even passable over the last five years for all Marvin residents and non-residents. And that's something that people, they just think it's the state or somebody doing it. You know, the roundabout fairy is dropping these in. These are all being funded by Village of Marvin residents, you know? That's, and I think it's very important to make sure that people understand that point, you know? Because that's most, one of, really, the most critical thing that we're handling these days is safety in roads.
Six years ago, when I was driving from the roundabout that's in the middle here, and I went towards the high school taking my daughter to school, I counted 90, six years ago, I counted 95 cars waiting to make a left turn on where it wasn't a roundabout. So, yeah, we are doing things, we get complaints from people, where are those police officers that should have been directing traffic? They're all paid by us, and I'm not, I'm not kidding when I say about going to the legislature and demanding something from the unincorporated areas that are getting the benefits without paying a tax. And that's, it's, it's now, the communities are now forming, and it's pretty clear, if you should be a part of Marvin, or Weddington, or Mineral Springs, and you should be ponying up just like everyone else does, and I guarantee you, we would, we did the numbers, we'd have a little more budget to work with every year, and maybe be able to do this. And, and if the state is going to demand us, or NC DOT, or whoever is going to demand us to put these funds in place, then allow us the opportunity to capture those funds through unincorporated areas, so...
By the way, I just had a good friend of mine come back from Italy, and with all the improvements they've made, almost every intersection he's sitting out there are roundabouts, and it's crazy town. He says, driving in Italy, it was absolutely a nightmare, but just saying, because they're into roundabouts so much out there, but...
So, let's go, there's two motions that I need.
Yeah. Jamie didn't pipe in.
All right. So, roundabouts, we're all, okay, so I'm going to make a motion to prefer, to approve preferred alternative number two, roundabout, for the intersection of Joe Carr Road and Marvin Road.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve preferred alternative number two, roundabout, for the intersection of Waxell Marvin Road and Stacy Howey Road.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You have your marching orders. You just don't, you just don't have the money.
Yeah, we got no money, but we know what we want to do.
We know what we want, okay. Moving on, thank you.
Bjorn, thanks, Hunter.
Yes, thanks, Bjorn. Next up, reports and updates. We have manager's report.
Good afternoon, I have a couple of things. First, you all had asked, I think it was council member line, had asked about staff salaries versus total grants awarded for the last several years. We mentioned this briefly in the budget work session, but from 2022 to 2025, we've received about $3.9 million in grant funding, and the level of budgeted salaries over the course of 19 through 24 totals to be about 1.8 million. So, I'm sorry, 2 million, difference of 1.8 million in the positive for grants versus staff salaries. So, just wanted to mention that, y'all have a printout if you wanted to go into more detail on that. Wanted to also mention, real quick, just so the public is aware, we are aware of a suspicious person that was located behind Tom Short today in the woods, Deputy, I'm sorry, Lieutenant May. We'll briefly mention this in his report, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that we were aware of the issue. And then last, I wanted to let you know that over the last couple of months, we've continuously heard that the village was under a federal investigation. We have received a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers that this federal investigation has now been closed out. That letter was received on 5/7, I believe. And in that letter, it references the inventory of, or the investigation of a pedestrian trail system between 9 September of 2019 and May of 2020, I'm sorry, not May, March of 2025. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineer conducted an onsite investigation to determine if any unauthorized field was discharged into a water of the U.S. Based on their review, they've determined that the Village of Marvin pedestrian trail system did not result in an unauthorized discharge of field into the waters of the U.S., and no further action is needed. So, just wanted to make sure you and the public was aware of that, and...
Who did that letter come from?
The U.S. Army Corps of Engineer.
The Army Corps of Engineers.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on, clerk's report.
Good evening, council, two quick things. At the last meeting, you all approved the cost sharing agreement with Publix to update the logo, the village logo, on their monument. There was one typo in the contract that you all saw on your agenda, it said the logo would be changed in 2025, they meant for it to say 2026, so it'd be early first few months of next year. If you all are still good with it, we'll go ahead and sign it tomorrow and send it back, but I just wanted to give you all the chance to reevaluate now that you know that it's 2026 and not 2025. Does anyone have any issues with waiting another year, roughly?
I'm fine.
Okay. Only other thing I have is a quick update on public record requests. We are currently, as of today, at 25 for the year. We are on pace to, outpace 2024. This is getting very hard to track. I can't even begin to say how many email threads I'm working off of right now, trying to keep all these details straight. During your retreat, I brought you all two types of software that I was very much encouraging you all to consider. Laserfish, which focuses on the retention and organization of records to help us fulfill requests faster, and JustFoy, a software focused on the intake, workflow, and distribution of public record requests. I know we do not have any more funds in this budget this year, but I'm bringing this back to you all, just to let you know, this is getting much harder, and I would encourage you to consider both softwares next year.
Both, or if you had a choice, would you, which one would you pick?
They are tied together, they can work independently, but I'm definitely encouraging both. I don't think you can just pick one.
So, Austin, how much of you, and I'm not looking for an exact number, but how much of your time and staff's time is allocated to doing records requests? Is it 3%, 5%, 20%, 40%?
It's going to vary.
You can ballpark, whatever.
It's going to vary a lot. When I first came on staff in 2020, it was, I'd say, less than 5% of my time. I know just today, I've spent half my day just on record requests, not being able to do anything else, and I have multiple projects ongoing. I would say overall, I would say probably 30% of my time is currently just on record requests. And some, some requests, and that's really just the intake and management and workflow of them all. Most of the requests pertain to other departments, so I'm having to have meetings with Hunter for planning, or Christina for her records. This is taking a lot of time. We are enforcing our public records policy where we do enforce a special service charge for requests that exceed four hours of staff time, but even that four-hour threshold, if someone is below that threshold, let's say they're at three hours, three hours times, you know, 50 requests a year, that's still a lot. It's still a lot for everyone to manage here, because we're a small staff.
How many pages do you think you've produced this year so far?
Um, this year...
Ballpark, I mean ballpark.
This year, we're, I would say we're around...
Well, he's looking for that, I'll say, most of the records request has fallen on to me personally, me and Hunter, just so y'all are aware.
But that takes, but that takes time, so, so we're, we're using staff time to just push paper. That's a good use of our time. So, when we start looking at a budget again, some of this, I, some of this I get, but when you're producing tens of thousands of record requests, we're not utilizing staff. We're inefficient, and it's, and it's, it's, it's senseless. It is truly, and when I see some of these record requests, it's a fishing expedition. And it's, it's shameful. And I hate that you, I hate that any of us, because we all get the records request. If you want to be specific and you want to find something, if you're looking for something, and, and again, this is just a fishing request, this is just a fishing, fishing expedition. If you want something specific, it shouldn't take 50,000, 75,000 pages of something. This is ridiculous, and someone's got to call it out, and I don't mind doing it.
There were definitely a lot of large requests last year that generated that much paperwork. In the end, not that much was turned over because all that has to be gone through, things, confidential records have to be redacted, repeating records are removed, things of that sort. We were definitely tens of thousands of pages for last year, and this year, we're roughly at about 1,000, so we're not too far in yet, but we do have a potential large request right now that we don't know what volume that it's going to produce until we really get in there and try to figure that out.
Okay, good. So, so next year, when we, when we go to the budget, and everybody goes, screams, revenue neutral, revenue neutral, oh, that, I'm sorry, we've got to add four more staff just to take care of records requests. Never mind trying to improve the, improve the village, never mind trying to do something for the other 7,500 citizens that are out there. This is ridiculous.
There's not, there is nothing wrong with submitting a public record request.
It's not, but, but, Austin, my point, my point being, it's a fishing expedition, if you got a point, then by God, by all means, specifically point, point something out, do a records request, and be done with it. But this is, but you're wa...
It's just so vague.
You're wasting the other taxpayers' time and money and staff time.
It's my job is to intake those requests, to review them with our policy, to do those workflows with staff, and to provide the records in the end. I don't, I don't ask people what they use the records for, I'm just saying, with the requests that we've been receiving and with the resources I have available, it's a struggle.
Let's just, let's just shut down the government for six weeks and do nothing, and then just do records requests. We just produce records requests, let's just do that. Then let's see how many people start raising hell. This is, this is ridiculous. And I'll, let me ask, because I don't, I don't mind asking, how many records, how many people have been providing the records request? Is this coming from hundreds, 1,500 people across the village?
No, it's a relatively small group. The majority of the, of this year and last year were two people.
Oh, oh, good, good. So, we're going to set aside 30% of our time and staff time, and for everyone else, if we have 8,000 people in the Village of Marvin, 7,998 people have to... to go without your services and the services of the rest of the village for two. It's, it's absurd.
Since it's a public records request, are we, is it legal to say who it is that's asking for?
No, I don't want to know who it is. I just want people to know, I just want people to know, when we start to talk about budget and stuff, the, well, here we go. Let's do something for nothing. Let's do something for nothing. And it's absurd, because a lot of people don't know what's going on.
This is an area where North Carolina law has not kept up with the change of business. The number of records generated has gotten excessive, and they're hard to go through. And it's so easy to make a request now. Everybody does it online. They make a request. There needs to be change on a statewide level. South Carolina did change years about five years ago, where they do, automatically, you're able to impose fees. You have to provide it at the most economical way you can do it, but you get to impose the fees, you get to mandate a deposit based upon the estimate. And it, it does help, because some people are trying to go for a fishing expedition, some don't care. But when they're paying for it, the people that care, call them up. You can narrow it, and it helps everybody. But there's no motivation for that right now.
Well, there, there should be. I don't know if that goes to the state legislature.
It's a state law issue.
Well, but again, if there's a cost associated with it, with the pages and stuff, because right now, we're losing staff time. We're inefficient.
I agree.
And, and here we are, looking at budgets, and we're, we're doing everything we can to wrench out every, so, revenue neutral, wrench it out. And then we got, and then we got, we're just, we're, we're doing all the work, all the good work on this side, and we're throwing it away on this side.
At the end of the, at the end of the day, I just, I wanted to give you all an update, just to let you know where I stand with the resources that I have. I'm not interested in singling out anyone who's made a request or to talk about their motivations. That's not my job. That's not what I do. I just feel like it's my duty to keep you all informed of our operations here and where, where I stand in my department.
Thank you.
Jamie, maybe that we sit next year and we have a budget, that we're going to have a budget for matching funds on grants. Maybe we can have a bucket for record request. I mean, that's-
All right. I'm gonna move on.
That is all I have for my report.
Thank you. Austin. Next up, planners' report. What do we got? You're good? Okay. All right. Moving on to public works' report. Davey.
Good evening. Just got a few items to update you all on. The North Carolina Department of Transportation did approve Marvin's request for abandonment at their April board meeting for the roads that we submitted back in January. They include all of the roads in Innisbrook, Innisbrook at Firethorn, Woodcliff Court, and then various roads in Marvin Creek. So that's good news. We now own the responsibility for those roads. So with that, we are now continuing to move forward with the fog sealing project. So fog sealing will be adding fog seal to those particular roads to go ahead and get them in the, in our process of our maintenance program. So we should be, again, we're working with Russell Standards, who won the contract for that fog sealing bid. And the project should be completed by the end of September. We're still on pace to have that done by then. There are some upcoming abandonment requests. Council has shown interest in moving forward with asking the North Carolina Department of Transportation to abandon the roads in Valhalla Farms and Providence Ridge, based on, they were recently resurfaced through a DOT, North Carolina Department of Transportation contract. Their one-year warranty is not quite up yet. It'll come up in July. And so I have some more information based on those two neighborhoods coming up later on in the meeting, in the new business items section. So we'll have some little more in-depth discussions on those. The stormwater inventory assessment, AMT has completed the assessment, but they are still trying to get the mapping system ready to go. They're having, they had some technical difficulties in that department. So, but I was assured that we should have those in the next week or two. So as soon as we get those, we'll, we'll have that information for you. And the wounded heroes courtyard, that project is still moving forward. Staff's been in contact with the Independence Fund representatives. We are working through trying some design work for the courtyard itself. They should have some information to provide to council in the near, near future for that.
So is there anything else that's holding that up to funding, or anything like that?
Not at this time. It's just, it's just really getting the design under pretty much what council would like to see. And then they would go out for, get a actual architect to design it and then bring it to us, and then the funding would come after that. So we're still moving through that. I'll provide you, continue to provide you updates as, as we go along with that. And we do have one other update to speak of. It's for Newtown Road.
Yeah, real quick, can you mention the sliding of the road on Innisbrook?
Yes, so, yeah, the asphalt, the engineer is still, has been looking at the entrance to Innisbrook, and I think one of the entrances to Marvin Creek as well, getting some pricing for making maybe some asphalt repair for the entrances prior to fog sealing it. They're still going through that, that right now, and trying to determine whether it is doable in the current budget, or should we just move forward with just fog sealing. So right now, that's still in the, in the works, trying to figure out exactly how we're going to handle that in the budget. But that is a possibility. There may be some work done at entrances on those two roads.
So in short, there's, there's a little bit of work that can be done to help preserve it a little bit better before it's fog sealed. So I think our stance is, it's not 100% necessary, but we feel like it would be a better expenditure of dollars to actually get it to where it needs to be before we actually fog seal it. So we'll bring that back to you all before they do the fog seal, to see if you, if you want to go there or not. But it's, it will be a budget amendment. And then the last thing is the Newtown takeover. You all had inquired about taking over Newtown and, and was curious about if we really could take over the speed limits and then limit through traffic. So in our analysis, I sent you over some information, but the answer is, is, is kind of yes and no. I don't know if you want to mention this, but basically, state authority gives it to the municipalities, but they can also take it away if they see that it's not.
That was actually the quote. I said, "They giveth, but they can taketh." Ultimately, all regulation over the roads, including municipal roads, because they're part of the highway system, they can still regulate. And even if there is a municipal road, they can come back and incorporate it as part of their system. There is a process for that. It has to have a public hearing. So theoretically, it could happen. And there's other state regulations that apply that, basically, they preempt. You can't regulate certain vehicles, and so you can't come through the municipal limits, because it would be too hard with both interstate and intrastate travel. But there's certain regulations, but you can certainly regulate. And I think the most important thing would be the speed limit. And there's a state statute that currently states that that is within the municipal realm to regulate. So that's the most important aspect.
Can we keep the trucks off, too?
Not completely. That's her, there's a state regulation on that related to the size. And you can prohibit some of the larger-
I mean, I've seen 18-wheelers coming through the roundabouts here, and they're running all over them. Like, there's no reason an 18-wheeler needs to be coming through the middle of Marvin.
Correct. And there are regulations that state how you can regulate the trucks and impose those. And I need to study those further. But yes, you can ban some of the very large ones, subject to the state regulations.
So you can get us more information?
I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
By the way, can I just make a comment? For years, going, driving to South Park on Ray Road, prior to that community that, I forget the, the name of the community, but you go through the final community before you get to Fairview Road, there is a sign that says, "No trucks." So I, I, I'm just asking, that's there. Is, can you prevent? I mean, can they prevent?
You can put up signs at times. And, and it depends, but there's a, it's kind of complicated, because it deals with how far you are from major infrastructure, weight, gas stations. It's, it's one of these state regulations that's a little bit deep, and I'd have to dive into it. But I do know that the regulation of trucks is limited, but they reference another, it's a state regulation instead of a state statute of how you can do that. But I can, I can dive into that further. I do think you can keep the larger 18-wheelers off. I think the, what I call a, a U-Haul, which is like a Class C, I think, I think is a little harder to regulate.
Thanks, Taplin.
And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Davey.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? None. Deputies' report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Glad to be with you again tonight. Talk a few, or talked a little bit about our deputies' report for the month and the activity that our deputies assigned to this area, and those that also help service this area have conducted. I believe you all have it in front of you in your packets, but just a few things to, to highlight. As far as burglaries, calls for service, that's the number we want to see, and that's zero. We've not had any residential burglaries or anything like that in this area. Our detectives continue to work hard at identifying any suspects that intend on targeting Union County and proactively prevent that from happening. Car breaking and entering calls for service, that's also marked at zero. There were two attempts, that should be noted, but they weren't able to get in, because the people did the right thing and locked the doors. As soon as they realized that door was locked, they just moved on. So once again, that's a PSA to the community, lock your doors, and nine times out of 10, they're gonna keep moving. So those are always good numbers. Our preventative patrols, up around that 700 number, those are the deputies you see riding through your neighborhood. Sometimes they may have those blue cruise lights on, sometimes they may not. And that's just checking for any kind of illegal activity or suspicious activity in the neighborhood, and making those interactions or those relationships with the community. Traffic stops, our deputies have been out conducting traffic stops. It's marked at 41 for within the Village of Marvin. However, I would like to note that that number's much higher in the fact that there's a lot of traffic activity and enforcement activity that happens just outside the Village of Marvin that directly affects the traffic in Marvin, such as when we conduct the saturation operations on Newtown Road near the Wesley Chapel Fire Department. That directly affects the traffic coming in here, but that's wetting. So those numbers won't reflect in your deputy report. We are out there in force. We've got another traffic operation planned for later this month. I don't want to give you the exact date on that just yet, because that defeats the purpose of it. But, but we will be out there. We are addressing the troubled areas, specifically the school. During those drop-off and release hours, we've seen a lot of people at high speeds come through that area. The rest of the calls for service, you know, like I said, they're pretty self-explanatory. Traffic collisions, we've had nine investigations that the sheriff's office has conducted. That means the citizens didn't have to sit there and wait an hour on, you know, a highway patrolman or someone to come up. Our deputies were able to take care of it. So got, got those people on the road quickly and opened the roadways back up. One service I did want to highlight, that you can see here, there's zero residential checks. I've personally been out in the community, looking for these residential checks, so I can go check people's houses. And we, we're not having a lot of people use that service. It's free. It takes 10 minutes to sign up. If you're going on vacation, just drop us a note in, in that, that, on that form, and we'll be happy to come check your house. And that'll give you that peace of mind. Careless, eight instances of careless and reckless driving were addressed. By address, that means we were able to either locate the offender and issue appropriate citations, or sometimes we weren't. But more, more than oft, or more likely than not, we were able to locate these offenders in these cases. And additional follow-up investigations were conducted in the area related to several different types of cases. I did want to touch on the suspicious person call that we responded to earlier today off of Tom Short Road. It was about 9:47 a.m. this morning. Deputy Breslin, the Marvin car, was called to the area of Tom Short, right near the intersection of, of Ray Road. From there, there's a walking path just off the road, that's directly across from a swim school or a business right there, if you're familiar with that area. That trail, that walking path is before that neighborhood begins. The call for service noted that there was a young woman back there sleeping on the, on the walking path. So Deputy Breslin went out and walked the trail, located a young woman. She hadn't set up camp there. There's no indication that she was living back there or anything like that. She told the deputies this morning she'd been there for a very short time. She was coming from the Charlotte area and took some time to sit down and rest before she moved on. No, no indications of alcohol or narcotics consumption. She was not a wanted person. There's been no criminal activity linked to her presence within the community. Deputy Breslin provided her some resources for, you know, potentially government-funded housing and some assistance resources to kind of help get her back on her feet and, and helped her get out of that area. So we've not had any other calls for service related to this young lady today. And like I said, no one's called in or reported any type of crime where she may be the, well, nobody's called and reported any type of crime. Let me just leave it there. So at this point, we handled it just like we do every other suspicious person call across county. We checked if there's criminal activity. In this case, none was present. So we just helped that person on their way while providing some helpful resources. So I appreciate Christina bringing that up, because we do want to be transparent, let folks know that we are out there working hard to keep them safe. And we appreciate the callers. It's always important that if you see something that just doesn't feel right, or you think we need to check on, go ahead and pick up the phone, call 911. Let us come check it and put that on us. We'll take care of it.
Say that, say that one more time. Who are we supposed to call?
Yeah, pick up, pick up the phone and call 911. Everybody's scared to death. They say, "I'm gonna go to jail if I call 911 and it's not an emergency." Unless you call 911 39 times in a row, you are probably not gonna go to jail. If you call 911 once and say, "Hey, I got a suspicious car parked outside of my house," that immediately gets a deputy dispatched on the way. If you call our main office, we're gonna send you to the dispatch center, and there's a switchboard process. It's gonna take a minute or so to get you there. Let's go ahead and get people on the way. So 911 is the way to go. Call us immediately. If you don't want to call 911, because you don't want your name out there, you can remain anonymous with 911, or you can submit a tip through our website or smartphone app. And I actually receive those. So I dispatch, or send those to the deputies in the area. So like I said, our deputies continue to work hard out there to keep the village safe. As you can see by the numbers, crime is very low. We're, we're very happy with that, very proud of that. And if anybody has any feedback or concerns, I'm glad to hear it. We appreciate the support we continue to receive from you all.
I'm probably giving you a free advertisement here, so beware, everybody, that I found myself at 6:15 going down Joe Carr Road towards Marvin School, and there's that beautiful black and gray that hangs right over there by the entrance of Marvin Creek. So just beware, just making sure. You're out there, you've been many times. Thanks.
Sure. And with speed, and I think it's important to note, too, with speed enforcement, it's a, it's difficult at times, right? Because we put that marked sheriff's billboard on the side of the road. What do people do? They slow down, right? So I was looking at the radar reports in here, and it says, you know, the average maximum speed's 82 miles per hour. I can promise you that that person's not gonna do 82 miles per hour past a sheriff's deputy sitting on the side of the road. If they do, then we've got a space for them and wing it. Then we're probably gonna take them and give them a new address. So we're out here, like I said, if you see the deputy parked on the side of the road, they may be completing an incident report, but just that visual presence is a, is a deterrent in and of itself. So like I said, we are, we are out there. And once again, we couldn't do it without the community's support, and we appreciate it.
Just, I know you guys were out helping to support us in traffic control and stuff at Marvin Day, too. And so thank you very much for, for your support and interaction and handling all that, too. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to be out there. Tyler did a great job of coordinating everything, coordinating everything on the safety end. So it was, it was a good day. I know we've got the 5K coming up, we'll also be part of. We look forward to it. So any other questions or concerns?
No. I did want to say a couple of things. Anybody that's listening, don't call council. Don't call the village. Call 911. That's what happened today. A council person got a call. Don't, don't do that. Just call 911. It'll get handled significantly faster, and you're not gonna get in trouble for doing it. So if you think that there's an issue- an issue, let them go figure it out. Um, in terms of the speed and things that was brought up earlier in public comments, um, uh, we agreed that, uh, no streetlights, um, on Marvin Road, so, um, we had talked about that in a previous meeting, so that's not even on, uh, the list. Um, unfortunately, a speed bump to slow down people on Marvin Road, um, it's not our road. We would've gotten the bonds done and we could've taken over Marvin Road, but that didn't happen, so we're not gonna be able to do that. Um, but we really appreciate you and the team here in Marvin, so thank you so much for all that you guys do.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, uh, to add on to that, um, one thing that we have done proactively, um, to help the Sheriff's Department do their job that much better is we've added off-duty hours to our budget to have more deputies out there, and they are, um, unlike our normal deputies, these, these folks are targeted towards certain duties because we hire them specifically to do certain things. One of those is traffic. So, um, we are well aware of, of the traffic issues that we have here, the speeding, and we are taking steps to try to, um, crack down on that, and, uh, all of our deputies are, uh, working hard to, to keep people at safe speeds, so.
That's great, and just one thing to add there. I, I do want to make sure that the public knows that it is a balance, right? If you're parked on the side of the road and you're, you know, running that radar to check speed all day, well, then you're not checking your, your neighborhoods. You're not checking your houses. You're not stopping by your local businesses and making sure everything's okay. So there's got to be a balance there. Um, so that's what our deputies try to, try to achieve, is that delicate balance of, you know, business and residential security versus traffic safety. So, once again, we'll continue to target with these, target high speeds with these large operations and these, especially the trouble areas, and help slow people down, send that message. One thing I, I failed to mention is, uh, this Thursday at twelve forty-five, just a, just a notice, no pressure, um, but in the Judicial Center of the Courtyard, twelve forty-five this Thursday, we'll do our annual law enforcement memorial ceremony. We will honor the fallen law enforcement officers across the nation, including, um, several that were here in Union County. So, if you're able to make it out, it's about a thirty to forty-five minute ceremony, but it's, uh, just a, a great tribute to, to law enforcement and to, uh, to the community as a whole. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next up will be a planning board report.
Well, the planning board made, met on, uh, April fifteenth, and, met on April fifteenth, and, um, the first thing that they discussed, uh, was the application of the R O, R O M S Investment LLC project, which is over here on Marvin School Road. Uh, revised elevations were shown, uh, to the planning board. Uh, there was no, um, action made, however, pending a traffic impact analysis. Uh, they will be looking at, really, the month of May, which is this month, uh, to make a decision on that or to give the recommendation for that project. Um, the second thing that came up was, of course, the Rayleigh Miller Project, which is Ray Road and Tom Short, which is called Marvin Commons. Uh, they were showed , uh, elevations, uh, and design for that, um, and that was their first exposure to seeing that project, and they had questions and answers for that. No, nothing was done there. Uh, lastly, um, might be a surprise to folks, but an application, um, and by the way, the Rayleigh Miller Marvin Commons Project, there was an application formally presented for that one, uh, to the, um, planning, uh, you know, planning and zoning, but basically the big one was, there is an application for, um, the construction of an Whataburger in front of where it would be Publix on Providence. Um, there were different designs shown, um, and just how it would be put in there, uh, with a drive-through, and so that's something that that was presented for them for the first time, and, uh, that was it.
All right, any questions? Bob? All right, off the hook, Bob. John, PRG Board Report.
There were a couple of PRG Board meetings that were gonna be out of town this month, so there was no meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Tyler, Event Plant Report.
Yeah, so we had a busy April. Uh, we had our Easter egg hunt on April twelfth. It was jam-packed. We had a good time. Had a petting zoo, ice cream, tons of kids. It was great. Um, and then, on April twenty-sixth, uh, we had Marvin Day. Just want to thank everyone on the council and staff for all their help. Um, we had a really solid turnout. I think the kids had a great time. In our kids' fun zone, we offered a lot of stuff, like face painting. There was good food trucks, had some beverages. The band played really well, uh, so that was a nice night of fun, and, uh, it was definitely a group effort, so I appreciate all the help. Rolling into what's coming up, so May thirty-first, we'll have our five K and fun run at Marvin Elementary School. Registration is up online. Look on our socials, in the newsletters, on the run sign up. You can find it there. The five K's at nine AM, the kids' fun run's at ten AM, and beginning at eight AM, I don't know why I said that all backwards, at eight AM, we're gonna start our vendor fair, so if you're interested in being a, uh, vendor at our health fair, reach out. We have that registration link up online as well. Um, so that'll just be a fun morning of coffee, run, and we'll have some snacks from Publix there. Um, so that'll be a good time. That's May thirty-first on a Saturday. And then after that, um, we're trying something new out at the park. On June twenty-first, we're partnering up with, uh, some of our local friends from First Class Cars, and we're gonna do a classic car show, um, at Eford Park, Saturday, June twenty-first, from eight to eleven that morning. Um, First Class Cars is bringing a few of their nicer vehicles out there, some of their classics, some of their Corvette-type deals. Um, and then it's just open to anyone in the public who has a classic car in Marvin and the surrounding areas, wants to come out for a morning of hanging out, you know, looking around at some cars. Um, just gonna be a cool morning.
June twenty-first?
June twenty-first.
At Eford?
Yes, sir.
At the other park? Well, no, it's nice at Eford because they, we paved it.
We paved it, exactly. It's great.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we'll also have our local, uh, local business ISI. We'll be out there as well. They're working together with First Class Cars. Um, they'll be doing a little bit of health and wellness stuff, and then we'll be out there having a good time. So, yeah, spread the word about that. I know there's a couple, a couple car guys up here, so spread the word. And then, later on in the summer, um, working with Union County Parks and Rec on getting some of our, uh, Marvin Day camps going out there at Kane Creek Park. Um, those dates are gonna come in a bit, aiming for end of June through July, and some into August, doing a couple of those dates. Uh, still trying to finalize those, but that's about it for events and stuff right now. Any questions?
Can you tell us when National Night Out is?
National Night Out...
I'm assuming...
It's the first Tuesday, is that the fifth?
Okay.
Yeah. August fifth will be National Night Out.
And you still would like some volunteers?
Yes. We have a great group of young men who actually come and volunteer and feed our local law enforcement. It's a really good setup. Um, that'll be from, uh, five-thirty to eight-thirty that night on Tuesday, August fifth, National Night Out will. Um, that's about as far out as we are right now.
Tell me the, tell me the times again, I'm sorry.
It'll be five-thirty to eight-thirty. Hot dogs, law enforcement, EMS, fire trucks, good times.
Great job with Marvin Day.
Yes, all of staff, Tyler, everybody.
Very well, very well organized. The, the layout, I think, really helped this year, having the stage where it was at, having the food trucks on the other side, and, and I, I just, w- we're, we're learning, and you're, you're making great strides in a positive direction for years to come, and I'm sure we're, we're gonna continue to learn lessons every year and, and make it better every year, and, and thank you. You did a great job with that, and I think we are heading in the right direction with it.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was run very efficiently, I can say, 'cause I, I, all of the staff here has been through all the, all the Marvin Days, and they were all breathing a sigh of relief that it was all you this year.
It wasn't Jill, running like, I mean, I'm sorry, Jill, sorry.
It ran...
Just kidding.
Super smooth, so, um, good job.
So, I apologize because I was worried with you. It was not there. Um, what did they just refresh, I know. Family, family first, and we were, right, but, um, parking, where, where, what did you end up doing parking? Shuttle, stuff?
Yeah, so we, we crammed a lot of people in the park, um, and then we shuttled from the elementary school right here. We ran one shuttle. I think it worked out pretty well that way. We were able to park quite a few people. I mean, especially now that it's paved, a lot of the pa-parking in the beginning happens organically, and then we kind of fall in behind and fill in the cracks, so it works really well.
Good to hear. Thank you, Tyler. All right. Coffee with council, that's another meeting that I missed. Oh, my God, you aren't that.
Yeah, it was, it was both Andy and I, and, uh, we met, um, yeah, and we, we, uh, actually bent on the, um, I forget what date, last time. It was April twenty-second, yeah. And, um, we had three people come. Um, the main focus of it was, uh, and I, she gave me permission to mention her name, um, a citizen, Jill Dutton, um, who lives in Amber Meadows, was concerned about two things. Uh, one was, um, the fact that there was a, um, conversation, I guess, that she had heard, or there was a trail easement agreement, which she gave you a copy of, that was done October twenty-ninth, uh, of last year. That was between, um, the townhomes there, uh, the townhomes, was it, Towns of Audrey, and the trail that would be connected from those townhomes to this very trail that I guess this person was found on today. Um, she, um, was concerned about whether that was gonna happen or not, and we kind of alleviated her thoughts of, there's no real concern for it because that, that it's, there's really nothing going on. There's no, there's, we can get into that more, but there...
Yeah, although the Towns of Audrey isn't interested in, in annexing, so there would be no, no rea-reason for connectivity there.
And the, the other thing that she had brought up was, and we thank her for coming and bringing this to our attention, she brought up a, a, a concern of what she had seen on the website, considering the trail of Tullamore that would be put there, and it wasn't exactly looking or matching what had been on the website. So, uh, she provided us some sketches and was asking about that. Um, I don't know if you wanted to speak about that.
Yeah, I mean, it just follows our normal process. I mean, those sketches are just basically approximate locations showing connectivity from A to B. It's not necessarily the direct route. Um, so, the actual route was then walked with Trail Builder, the Towns of Audrey. Uh, that's what was surveyed and is part of that agreement. Um, and that's just based off of, uh, topography, uh, existing conditions and stuff out there. So, the route itself, from getting from, connecting Amber Meadows to the Tullamore Trail, that's this project, but it's overall where, where it's located was slightly just changed, just based off of, uh, walking the site and, um, actually planning out, planning out where the trail should go.
So, um, just to elaborate on this, and, and we had this discussion, um, and I'm recalling our discussion after this meeting, is that the, the meeting, the council meeting, that council approved this connection to, to get this, was, that was it. It was just an approval for it. Everything else happens on a staff level, between the easement grantor and staff. Council doesn't actually get into the weeds and, and approve a specific, um, trail map or what have you. We, we approve the concept, and then it goes to staff level to work out all the details. So, um, 'cause there was a concern about what we approved at a meeting versus what was actually done, and you just described why it was done that way. So, I just wanted to make sure that the public understands how this works. We don't, we don't have a specific in front of us when we approve this. We approve a, a concept, um, a, a kind of a general idea of, and then all the details are worked out on the staff level.
Yeah, and just to add, regarding like the connection with the Towns of Audrey, once again, um, that was, you know, when we were discussing this project, that was mentioned to my staff that the representatives of the HOA with the Towns of Audrey would like to see a future connection. It was conveyed to them. Obviously, it's contingent upon, uh, potential annexation itself, and they understood. So, the project that we are currently working on is obviously just to connect Tullamore and Amber Meadows. Um, that future connectivity is just, it's, it's a concept. Um, once again, it would have to go through you guys approving funding, um, which would, once again, be contingent upon them annexing, and then we'd have to go through the design and all that stuff to actually get the routing.
That was it?
Okay, that was it.
Thank you, and I think Jamie and I had one just May first, but no, no takers.
No takers.
But we were able to catch up, so it was good.
Yeah, it was good.
It's good, a little coffee. No coffee. Um, so, come on by. There's, not many people are taking up, us up on that offer. Wuma is next.
Wuma.
That's the one I missed.
So, Wuma, um, the Metropolis of Mineral Springs hosted this, uh, this round, um, and, uh, there really wasn't a whole lot. We, uh, most everybody's just going through the throes of budget season. Um, few, uh, few people were mentioning some of their activities that, you know, going on, springtime weather's nice. They're doing all their respective, um, town activities. Um, the main focus is, of course, for next, this coming Wuma meeting this month, when, uh, we will be meeting in Waxaw on the twenty-second at seven PM, and we are hosting our state representatives and Congressman Todd Johnson. So, we, um, are looking forward to having that, uh, one-on-one with these guys, and, um, we are doing it at seven PM in the evening to make it, um, accessible for the public. We encourage the public to come out and, uh, meet these guys and, and ask your questions, anything you wanna ask them. Um, you know, we've, we've compiled a, a list internally of some things that, uh, are, the municipalities are looking to ask them, but, uh, um, we encourage the public to come out. This is a, a great opportunity. Um, so, seven PM Waxaw, twenty-second, Thursday.
Thank you. Okay. And next up, we have the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It passes, and we're gonna take a little five-minute bio-break right now, so.
I, I, I don't know that that's right yet.
What's that?
I don't know that that's right yet because...
With Waxaw, you know what's...
Yeah, but with them, you know, additional money. I don't know that that's...
Yeah, there's, yeah, 'cause they, they haven't even started construction on that project yet, and they're not gonna get fee, they're not getting the TIA money until they get the CO on the first house in that project. They haven't even started breaking ground, so that money is...
But it was around two hundred and fifty, you know, so it was a substantial amount.
Yeah, and, and, and if we could get that, great. Yeah, 'cause they don't want to get stepped on and all that stuff, but it's, it is something, even, even if we have, um, even if we've constructed this thing and spent the money, before they get that money, they could still reimburse us, and that would, you know, come back to us.
Then we put it back to our roundabout fund, yeah.
Right, but, uh, yeah, it is, that is a little bit far out yet.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I don't want to screw up a hornet's nest for them saying, "Why are you paying for something in Marvin?"
Well, that, did you see that Nextdoor thread?
Yes, I did. That's why, that's why I told them.
And that, and she was totally confused.
Yeah, yeah.
Wrong road, wrong intersection, all of it. Yeah, so there were a bunch of people that commented on that, but...
Hayden made that.
Oh, he's doing pen timing? That's awesome. I've got a little tiny lathe that I have never used, um, to turn pens. This thing I've got's like an antique, and it mounts on a piece of plywood and it has a, a separate motor, but it's a little tiny lathe, like, you know, this big. Yeah. I don't have time for that.
So, we, so there's misinformation, there's people wasting their time, and so, staff will have time to do what they're supposed to do. do what they're supposed to do.
Well, I agree, I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut over here.
Why?
Election ticket.
This is, this is.
You know.
From afar?
From afar, yeah.
You know any, uh, good cheap ad hoc plumbers?
What do you need done? Cause I do plumbing.
Oh, it's relatively centered. It's, uh, I've got, I've got just a copper pipe that I probably need a couple of shark bites, could, could even be pecks. It's in a full basement, but I just got a leak coming down in my basement. And when I did a renovation, I ended up adding a second hot water heater, because I added a on thing. And I told the guy that put it in, that what I wanted, is I wanted the hot water to be in sequence. And what he did is he put a cold water line into the hot water heater, so.
So you want the hot?
I wanted the hot water, so everything is right there, I just need, you know, the cold, so.
Probably take me thirty minutes to.
It, it, it's really not a lot, but, uh, um, and it's all open, cause it's all in an open unfinished basement. Okay.
I just fixed a major issue for Christina and her office.
Yeah.
The, um, the main water, uh, water line in the basement, every single one of the connections blew out.
It's, you know, it's a forty-year-old house. It's not connections that I have an issue with, it's little pinholes, just developing the copper pipes over years, you know? Cold water and stuff will cause that from the inside, you know? And, and I.
We're good? All right, I was told to get this party starting again. Um, we're gonna move right into unfinished business. First up, we have discuss and consider approval of updated trail standard presented by Dewberry.
Yeah, so this is.
He doesn't look like Dewberry, yeah. You've changed.
And so these are what Dewberry sent us over, this is part of the trail feasibility study, but these are just updated trail standards for us to work off in the village. Um, it covers natural surfaces, asphalt, concrete. Um, we sent these off to AMT as well, to have them review, we got a thumbs up from them, Dewberry likes it, uh, just bringing this up here for kind of approval to add to our stuff moving forward.
This was basically, if you recall, a conversation we had about six months ago, where y'all wanted to look back at the twenty-eighteen trail standards that didn't get carried over into the new Greenway master plan, this is exactly what that did. So we sent those over, told them to incorporate them into what would, what we would consider into our spec manual, so moving forward, these will be moved into that spec manual for any developers that might develop trails like, uh, Jones Homes, um, like something similar to that.
And, and I just wanted to check, it, it's not really something that we need to have PRG go back and review, because it's really just taking the existing trail types that we have and applying the specific engineering specifications to them?
Right.
I, I think you could advise them that we did it if, if you want to, but I don't think we need their approval.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, cause it's the same asphalt, concrete, and natural. And the natural's based on our new crushed concrete.
The only thing it really did was to provide the, the substrate detail, the finite detail.
Yeah.
So the process, this goes to AMT, you said?
No, it's already been.
Oh, it's already been, okay.
So, do we have, just, cause I've learned something new from our last meeting, but do we have, um, standards for concrete in any, okay, and do we?
On this added, a concrete, it doesn't go into that.
Okay.
Yet, but I do need to ask that question if that concrete falls into just concrete.
Okay. So what I'm getting at, guys, is that, um, we, we learned in our last meeting, guys and gals, whatever, um, the, um, what we learned in our last meeting from Dewberry is there is now a, a permeable concrete. So it's, uh, it's a little bit more expensive, but it, it does not, um, flag you for impermeable surfaces now, to use this particular type of concrete. So we are going to incorporate that for our, the, to connect our sidewalk here, which eliminates the need for the second, um, retention pond, because it's, there is no impermeable surface in anything we're doing on Village Park, Village Hall Park. So that was, so this is something new that, that we just learned about, so that's why I was curious about that and how it applies to this, because if that is in fact a, a good sustainable product, I'd like to see us use that more, if we can. Just, you know, obvious advantages to it if it's sustainable.
So if y'all have no further questions, um, we just wanted you to approve that, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna make a, Christina's like, move on, let's go. Like, I'm making a motion to approve the proposed trail standards as presented.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next up, we're onto new business. First up, we have discussion of roads in Valhalla Farms and Providence Ridge to be considered for abandonment to NCDOT.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as I mentioned earlier in, uh, the Public Works Report, um, based on council's, um, interest and request for staff to move forward with, um, petitioning the North Carolina Department of Transportation, uh, to abandon the roads in Valhalla Farms, uh, and in Providence Ridge as well. Uh, the, both neighborhoods had roadways that were, uh, resurfaced in a North Carolina Department of Transportation, uh, resurfacing project, uh, within the last year. Um, all of those roads, um, their one-year warranty comes up in July, so staff is moving forward with, um, providing all of the documentation to the NCDOT, um, for that petition. In saying that, what we found was, uh, in Valhalla Farms, uh, I'm gonna break these down into both, two different, uh, developments, but Valhalla Farms, you have Viking Drive, Prince Valiant Drive, King Olaf Drive, and Rainbow Drive, those are the roads we'll be submitting for abandonment in that neighborhood. Uh, what we found was, in, in your, you've got a map there for Valhalla Farms with a red arrow and a little slither of yellow on the road. That's, uh, Prince Valiant, all of it falls within the incorporated limits of Marvin, except that one small area, which is basically the length of the properties that are adjacent to Prince Valiant, just for that, the exit onto Gray Byrum. In saying that, um, we are, we can move forward, we have a couple of options, we can move forward with requesting, um, that these roads be abandoned by the NCDOT up to the boundaries of Marvin, which would mean the DOT would still own a small portion of Prince Valiant. I don't know right off, I haven't had conversations with them, I don't know their appetite to only own a small portion of it, but I wanted to get in front of you and find out if you would like for staff to reach out to those property owners, and as we discussed in previous meetings, there's a form, and Form SR three that requires any roadway that, um, we would ask for to be abandoned, if there's any county residents that, uh, are along, are adjacent to that roadway, we would have to get their permission through a signature on that form to add with our documentation that we'd present to the NCDOT. So all, tonight, all I'm asking for is, would you like for staff to try to get those, um, signatures for those two properties, or to use, would you just like us to submit a request for Prince Val, taking over Prince Valiant up to our boundary line?
For me, I think I would wanna get the SR three forms signed, because if, I mean, if NCDOT, um, takes care of this little section, that entrance is gonna go to crap, and we're gonna just pave up to it, that, can you imagine the, what the residents of Valhalla Farms are gonna think about that?
But, but we're not allowed to spend village dollars on non-village stuff.
And I think.
This is non-village stuff, and why am I continuing to spend village dollars on people who aren't in the village, this is what we were just talking about.
You can ask them if they want to be annexed into Marvin.
I'd rather ask them that than sign an SR three form.
This is, I suppose this is true.
Yeah.
Is it, is it just adjacent, or do they, or is it an address on that road?
I think it's any, if it touches the roadway.
Well, yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, but that's what I'm asking, is it, does, just if it touches?
It's in the, it's in the county, it's not in the village.
Right.
Uh, to me, I'm, I don't want, I'm sorry, but we, we keep talking about, what do we do for the village, we don't, well, uh, right there, there's somebody that doesn't live in the village, and we're now gonna take care of the road and beside them, in front of them, I don't know which way their house spaces.
Yeah, that's an precedent, too.
Yeah, and then, if you wanna really get into it, you look at the next neighborhood, and you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, at least fourteen, maybe fifteen, I can't really tell with the coloring of that, that are not in the village.
There, there are actually four properties, there's those two on either side of the road, and two next to that, that are in Union County. Everything else, other than Valhalla, is in, in the town of Waxaw. So it's just those four properties that are all adjacent to each other that are in Union County right now.
Yeah, but if you, but if you look at the next, the next one, you've got fourteen or fifteen. I'm not, I'm not in the business, I'm sorry.
This is.
We already do, we already do so much for unincorporated Union County by doing the roundabouts, by doing all the things that we do, I, I'm, I'm not interested in, in getting an SR three form, you can ask them if they want to annex in.
I would imagine those.
The, the, the second page, though, doesn't, you don't need those.
I'm sorry.
The second page, though, you don't need all those forms.
Yes, for the second page, we were gonna, I was gonna get into it, it, we would have to go to each, all, all fourteen of them and get their signature.
They're not in Marvin.
You would have to get all.
Cause I don't believe that happened with my neighborhood. And my neighborhood has, it looks similar to Providence Ridge.
I wish I would've known that.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as, as far as that goes, I would only do Giglin Lane and, and Nellie Lane and the other, the other, cause it's ha, it's fifty percent in Union County. I wouldn't even, no, because they don't live in Marvin.
Okay, so what I'm, I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, so for, we will submit for Nellie and Grig in Providence Ridge, cause that's all.
That's it.
In, in Marvin.
But especially over here on, uh, the little short one, I would make sure you talk to the people and let them understand why.
And, and I, we will reach out for Val, for Prince Valiant, we'll reach out to those two property owners, and if they have interest in annexing, we'll bring that back to you. If they do not, then we will just move forward with submitting for abandonment up to our property, our incorporated limits.
Yeah, in Providence Ridge, I would, I would recommend approaching the HOA first and let them know this, just so that they can perhaps communicate internally as a, you know, as a community, and say, hey, you know, they, we've got the opportunity that Marvin takes over Nellie and Grig, because they are complete, but we're not gonna be able to do these others unless people annex into the village of Marvin.
That would be, that would be a really good catalyst to get people to.
But I, I'd leave that to the HOA and kind of, you know.
We can do that.
That is a good point.
We can do that. Okay, that, that's what I was looking for, I, we can, we can move forward with all that.
Okay, so I, let me ask this one question, what if NCDOT won't give Prince Valiant without that spot?
Let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay.
Literally.
Tell NCDOT to get some money for, tell NCDOT to go to them and get the funding for it. It's not ours, we can't, we cannot touch a road that's not ours.
So what do we do with it if we can't, if, if we can't do that, what do we do?
Let's literally cross that bridge once we have an answer. I hate dealing in what ifs this, what if that, like, let's just get an answer, then we can make a decision.
I, I will raise my hand and say, I am actually the one to blame, because that was how I got contiguous all the way over to Weddington Chase.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So I literally am the one to blame.
It's you.
I always knew that about you.
He was the dividing line.
Literally.
Literally the dividing line for all those listening in. Um, okay, thank you, Davey, I appreciate it.
Don't go anywhere, you're up next.
You're up next. Um, oh wait, it didn't switch over. Discussion of request for no U-turn sign for Oak Brook Drive.
Okay, so, um, the homeowner association president reached out to me, um, recently about, they've, um, their neighborhood has been experiencing high traffic volume in, through their neighborhood, but the traffic is doing U-turns right in their entrance, uh, and they've asked that, um, Marvin, the village of Marvin, put a stop to it or find a way to, to curb it greatly. Um, what appears to be happening is what I'm, I'm being told, and we, we think is taking place, is, um, traffic that is heading to the school, that is coming up Waxaw Marvin and getting in, in traffic, turning left on the Crane Road, when Crane Road, when that backs up, that left turn signal, people are bypassing that, going down to their neighborhood and turning into their neighborhood and doing a U-turn. Their entrance has an island to it, um, uh, with plants and all of that, and.
There's actually a structure there.
It's a structure, so some are doing a U-turn, three-point turn, others are just driving, making a, a complete U-turn and driving onto their grass and damaging their shoulder of the road and, and the grass that they're maintaining. In addition to that, uh, I'm, we're being told that, uh, during certain hours of the morning, there's, there's enough vehicles that are stacked up making these U-turns that their, the residents of the neighborhood cannot get out onto Waxaw Marvin Road in a timely manner, so, uh, it's, it's become a frustrating point for the neighborhood, um, not, I've heard from, uh, at least one other resident in the neighborhood, uh, outside of the president, uh, complaining of the same situation. Uh, I had a conversation with, uh, our local law enforcement, they were aware of the situation, um, but they stated they really couldn't do anything, there were no, there was no signage or anything of that nature. Uh, I got our engineer involved, we went out, looked at, uh, what options there, you know, that could be done in there. Uh, it seems to be the best option of all would be to add a no U-turn sign at the entrance to the neighborhood, if we wanted to do that.
So what would the, the fine be for that? First of all, there'd have to be an officer there to witness it and pull them over, and is there?
We, yeah, it would, we, it would have to, we have to do this through an ordinance, so we would have, we would, I guess we would set the, um, the fines for it, I'm, be honest.
I was gonna say, what makes it an enforceable thing for the sheriff? Is it just us getting the proper sign and putting it there, or is it us designating it on a map somehow?
Is you passing it by an ordinance and putting it in your municipal code, and then they have the, the legal. And then they have the, the legal authority to enforce, along with some of your other traffic regulations, such as stop sign?
But, but they have that already, and we don't designate stop signs, right?
We do have them designated, buried in our code. We have a schedule, I think it's in seventy-two?
Seventy-four, seventy, chapter seventy-four, schedule two, is turning movements specifically.
So we, so we have, we hit in there already?
You shouldn't know that, it's a weird schedule, but every stop sign and other type of traffic regulation we have, and that gives them the legal authority to enforce.
And I know it's a problem, they do it at the high school, I've witnessed near horrible accidents from kids whipping around and making U-turns in the middle of the road, just to avoid the traffic light, so.
Okay, so does anybody have a problem with this?
I don't have a problem with it, not one bad time.
There is, there is a, a better solution, I think, to alleviate a lot of that, is opening up the backside of the student parking lot, but they're not going to do it.
Okay, so U-turn, okay, so, it's fine.
The school's just not working with us on-
Everybody consensus?
Yes.
Okay, so do the, do this, get the sign ordered, get the ordinance written up, we'll add it to the schedule, we'll approve that, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thanks. We do not need to beat this to death. Andy.
Discussion of potential stream network review. Davey.
So I'll, I'll just kind of open this, sorry. So we, when we did the, when we did the stream restoration project engineer analysis, we really, we, we really vetted our engineers, we had a really hard time picking between two different ones. We liked the strategy that, this proposal that you see in front of you, we liked how they had some additional resources and knowledge of other funding sources that are out there for particular projects. But we felt that the, the vendor that we selected for the strap was the most qualified for that project. But because we liked RKK so much, we went back and asked them to give us a quote for potentially doing an overall stream analysis across Marvin in general, not just one particular area, so that they could find some general high-level issues, problems, and match them up with funding sources that they knew were available. So that's essentially, in a nutshell, what this is. We do not have funding for it, but it is something that we felt was a benefit to the community as a whole, and we felt that this group would be really good at identifying funding sources to match some of the problems that they identified. So it's not that we have to do this, we thought it would be a luxury for our residents to have to solve some of the problems that they're seeing, but it's not, it's not a requirement.
So this is kind of defined as stream versus stormwater and stuff like that, correct? We're, we're talking about designated actual streams?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Davey, did you have anything else to add?
Storm events and cause flood.
Correct.
So that's the gist. We didn't want to prepare any type of budget amendment or anything further until you all kind of looked at this, wanted to vet it, to see if you're even interested in it. Unlike the strap grant, we actually got, you know, we got, we got a grant to pay for the engineering for that project, but that is only one particular area, it does affect multiple homeowners and HOAs, but it's one stream, whereas this one would be an analysis of all areas and identifying issues there.
Have they given examples of what kind of funding they've procured for a municipality based on doing something like this? I mean, this, I'm just start, looking at the cost benefit, like, okay, if we spent fifty grand on this, which is what the proposal is, what could we expect, or what could we see as an actual example of what we are returning on that one? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I don't know that we can answer that question, but they did give a lot of examples in their proposal on the strap grant, and it was all kinds of different funding sources, whereas the other engineers were, were solely strict towards, you know, one or another, whereas this one, they, they had an array of different areas that they, they had experience in.
So, being that these streams are on private property, and, you know, who, like, would these private property owners be paying for the rehab? Or are you talking about tax money that we all share to, to fix the streams that are in Marvin? Because there's, you know, I mean-
So our intent would be for them to do the analysis and to identify the problems and match the problems up with some funding source where it would be zero tax dollars. And, and I don't know that that's going to be actually how it works, depending on if there's, you know, match, matches for that, but the idea would be to identify funding sources that are out there at the least taxpayer cost to solving the problem.
I just would want to know more about the cost benefit, this is just-
Sorry, is this me, I'd want to know more about the cost benefit of what, what's in it for us? What would we get out of it? What could we potentially, given our, however many square miles we have of streams that run through Marvin? And I, I know they have, and I didn't go, do a deep va, dive in this, but it seems to be a lot of money, especially now when we're, we're pinching pennies as it is, trying to stay neutral.
Go ahead.
I'm inclined to not do this at this time. We've, we don't have the funding for it, we don't have a budget for it. We have gotten feedback from other residents that they are not interested in us helping them with some of these types of things, and we don't currently have anybody asking us for help with this. Especially when it comes to being on private property, we have run into a number of hiccups as we're trying to work with the strap grant, and then knowing that we are going to be out on private property, and we're still getting hiccups during that whole process. So i, if you were to ask me to make a decision today, I would not do this because I don't see a need for it from the community, they're not coming out being like, oh, please help us with all of this, because when we have tried to help them, it has been a headache, and we've basically been told that they don't want our help, so.
Yeah, I, I, I agree too, because, you know, let's say what this study identifies immediately is all these issues, right? And let's say that it's five hundred thousand dollars worth of issues, and, yeah, maybe we could get eighty thousand dollars in grants, or a hundred and twenty, but then we're having to justify why we're using them on some private property owners' areas and not others. So I, I think until we talk about how we build toward some funds for grants and things in the future, we get passed through this kind of crazy year with revaluations and, and taxes going up and stuff like that, that we, we take a look at it, this again next year, when we may be better positioned now. We've had the conversations about the roundabouts and stuff too, so are we ever going to be ahead of the money game? Probably not, but, you know, at some point, I think it's good for us to know, to communicate to the public, but I, I don't think that's worth spending the money now, doing it when we don't, when we know we don't have the monies to, to rectify things.
And that's totally fair, we, we're not pushing it either way, we just saw it as an opportunity to identify some future funding, wanted to present it to you, so we're, we're fine either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Davey. Discuss and consider adoption of resolution of opposition HB seven six five and SB six eighty-eight.
I want to make a motion to adopt the resolution of opposition to House Bill seven sixty-five and Senate Bill six eighty-eight as presented. You may discuss now if you'd like.
Any further discussion? I read it, and I'm, I'm all on board, I don't see there's any reason-
I agree.
So has this been, just out of curiosity, and maybe, Austin, you know this, or-
Or Hunter.
Hunter. Other communities signed a resolution yet, which ones?
Oh, pretty much every municipality in Union County has, as well as a lot across the state. I will mention that it's, last week, in the legislative session, it's, basically that's when they go to vote, and, and basically when it passes one, the House or the Senate, it goes to the other. This one was kind of in this little weird area, where they made some revisions, so it got sent back to committee. So it's like in this, it's not dead, but it could be.
I, I heard that it got voted out of its House committee, but still needs to go to the Finance Committee now, or something like-
So, and, well, they made a revision to it, which, like I said, it, it changed what they call, I think it's a crossover. And so, if you want to-
Yeah, I've read a little bit about that, they put financial implications on it, so therefore it's eligible to cross over to the next year. If that wouldn't have been added, it would have died with the session, so it's still technically alive, although it did not go through this session, or it doesn't look like it's going to. So, so this would still be helpful, yes.
Sorry, this or something very similar to this comes up in every session, and you got to believe it's fueled by the developers who fuel the legislators and, and stuff. So it's just amazing that they, they bring this up for-
To prove your point, three of the, of the four sponsors are builders.
Oh, I, I'm sure they're-
Like I said, it's, I wouldn't be surprised if, once again, you, this, this, this bill or future versions have iterations that certain components of it get passed, I mean, just once again, because that's what you're seeing, you're seeing bills like this introduced every single session, that's promoting quicker development proposals or more housing, it's something along those lines, so it's something that we'll always keep an eye on and, and bring your guys' attention when they get introduced.
Jamie, you've talked about not going through the process, this would not go through the process of a town making, a, a town making the decision, not the, the state. There's a motion on the table, unless there's anybody else who wants to pipe in or concern, there's a motion on the table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Next up, consider entering contract with Lumen Strategies for supplemental public education communications, not to exceed twelve thousand dollars with a ten percent contingency.
Go ahead. So for this item, we're, from a communication standpoint, we're looking to supplement what we do here. This contract is not intended to take anything off me and Polme, we're still going to be in the same level of communications we're doing now. The village has been very great at getting information out about, you know, day-to-day happenings, but one area where we've always struggled is getting information out about greater projects, like the Marvin Loop expansion, for example. You know, we can, we can post about, oh, the Marvin Loop's going to be closed from X date to X date for repairs, but really getting a lot of information out about very project-specific things is where we've struggled. So this is looking to close that gap, we're looking to do a trial run with this firm for a few months, and just to see if it helps, because even if we don't do this long-term, maybe we could pick up some pointers and learn some things, to do our jobs even better.
Do they do records requests?
I, I don't know about their, about record requests, but they do, they have worked with other municipalities before, for, for communications.
Thank you.
I, you know, I'm, for me personally, I'm on the fence on this, only because it's like, okay, we're, we're doing everything you can. I think the really, the miss is who's not signed up for our emails, and, you know, that's easy to do. If they just signed up for emails, they would get that information, but, I mean, it's not like we have a TV network that's, we're out there blasting about, you know, the truths or whatever we want to get across to the community, so.
It's all, it also helps us to do these communications earlier, much earlier, so whereas we might say, you know, coming down the line, you know, we, we got approved for a grant, this is the, we got approved for a grant, we've heard these concerns, this is the work that's going to be done. It's work, it's looking to really look ahead of the projects that are coming down the line, to start those communications early, so that we get information to people faster, so they can be well-informed.
But, but how, how does it work in the sense that, you know, you usually need a committee to make a decision on what we want to say as a group, as a whole group? And now we have a marketing team that's out there, are they on their own? Or are they, you know, are they taking the lead with, with what we say, which we only meet twice a month?
So it's not that, this, this is pure fact, this is what is the project that has been approved by the council. This is not you guys wordsmithing anything, you guys don't wordsmith our current communications, me and Polme does that. Well, you guys approve our general topics, but this firm would look to work with us to identify projects coming down the line, to start communicating on those early, rather than doing it, you know, months down the line when the project's getting really close.
Who uses them currently?
Most often on some of the bigger ticket items that we've had, you know, questions about, we've kind of done those reactively. And that's, that's when the public comes out and they, you know, speak concerns about things, we've kind of reacted to those and, and had some of that correspondence after the fact, and issuance of FAQs. So this is really, like you said, trying to anticipate some issues, and I'll just use an example. Let's, let's say one of our five-year goals is to implement stormwater, a stormwater, and I'm just using that as an example for people that are listening at home, don't fret at this point. But let's say that within three years, we want to have a stormwater program, because we're having stormwater issues and we want to have a way to address it. Part of the communications, and, and, and what I'm saying here is more long-term, but this is just to give you an example, is to say, hey, in the next couple of years, we've got stormwater that's going to come down. We're going to express some, in advance, communications that address what stormwater is, why it's important, what, how it's going to affect the community in a positive way, so that we can get ahead of those communications before it becomes a problem, or before we're, we're reacting to those situations where people are getting, you know, maybe not ill-equipped information, information that should likely be coming from the village, so that we can be ahead of some of the concerns that the public may have.
So would these communications be coming on behalf of these folks? Or are they being sent on behalf of the village?
Maybe on behalf of the village. Yeah. We would be sending them out, but they would be helping us to formulate them. It's still us doing our jobs here, it's still us posting, it's still us sending out press releases and newsletters and social media posts, but it's going to, it'll branch out into a, really a new area that we haven't gone before with our communications.
I, I guess the concern I have with it is kind of a good one, in that I think you guys have done a tremendous job of doing most of that, and, and we've really improved that over the last couple of years. The problem really comes when we send information out and people take little bits and pieces of it and create disinformation.
Get on next door.
So I go back to what Joe was talking about, which is, are we just reaching enough people with the right information? Because, you know, ha, half the people that, you know, might even hear the information one way or the other, the other half don't hear anything and don't really care much about municipal stuff, you know? And then there's a small percentage of people that want to take any information they get and use it to turn against us in, in one way or the other. Because, you know, people have differing opinions, they have the right to do that, and that's fine. But, you know, I, I just don't see where incorporating someone else into that process of, you know, I, I belong to social media, but I don't comment on it, because I feel like we should be doing it in the appropriate forums, and we should be doing it together, you know? Whether it's us speaking to the general public directly, or whether it's us speaking to the general public through staff, you know? And I think we do a really good job doing that, we just need to, you know, get more people to, to sign up for the email, to, to click on the, the, the Facebook page, or Instagram, or things like that.
So let me, let me just give one example that I think will put a little bit of this in illustration. So we all know that the Village Hall Park project has been a project that we have been working on for a couple of years now. There was a lot of confusion, misconception that the Geo Bonds had the Village Hall Park project in there, and, and when the village, the Geo Bonds were voted down, there was this kind of misconception in, in the community that we thought we voted that down. That was never the intent, and had we had, had we have had some type of marketing crew that could really, in the forefront of even the Geo Bonds, express what the, the Village Hall Park was going to look like, and providing more of a, a PR stance, and what that, that package looks like, so to say, we felt like that might be a level of opportunity where we could have avoided some of the confusion amongst the public. Does that, does that make any sense?
Well, let me ask a question, and I might have missed something. What mediums are you using that are different from what we've been using now? How many, what's, how is it, what avenues are you using?
We would be sticking, we would still be on our same mediums. We're on Facebook, we're on Instagram, we use YouTube for our videos, we have a very large email list that we distribute through MailChimp, we have our website. It's using, it's looking to make better use and proactive use of those resources, you know? I told you earlier that a lot of my time right now is taking up on record requests, that's the last time I have for everything else, including communications. Luckily, I have Polme here, but she's not always guaranteed to be here, and even when she's here, she's still split between myself and Hunter.
So-
We have lack, we have a lack of resources to be proactive on these issues.
Yes, so that's-
Because of your inefficiency in time-
Because of your inefficiency in time allocated.
Not his, not his inefficiency.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about him. I'm talking about if you had no records requests or the level of records requests that you had back in 2021 or 2020.
It, it's not just the record requests, because beyond that and beyond, I do a lot of things, do a lot of things.
Austin, I, I get that. I, and, and I applaud what we're trying to do here. I'm just looking at it financially and go, how, how can I measure my return on investment? How can I?
Well, part of it too, your return on investment is if you free up staff from having to send out additional communications on things, you can go get more grant money. You will have more time to do things like that. That is a better return on your investment than, than doing some of this other stuff and...
I, I applaud, I, I, Christina, I applaud you and staff for, for, for doing this. Because I think it's a, I think it's a, a very, um, critical effort to try to address some of the issues that we face as a council and with staff. But, I just sometimes just don't see the return on it. That you have a handful of people that are keyboard warriors and it doesn't matter what you send out. It doesn't matter if we got a $10 million grant and it was for everything that we wanted to do in the Village Marvin. You got keyboard warriors out there that'll turn it and say, oh my God, there was a, um, there was a quid, quid pro quo or something. And it comes back as negative. So, I, I'm a little hesitant to spend dollars because we're inefficient in doing other things and I don't know how we can measure our return on investment. I just purely look at it from a return on investment and it's unfortunate because I do believe this, this could help us. I just don't know how it, I mean, you can take a horse to water, you can't make him a drink. That's the old analogy. And we can put out as much information as you want.
Well, I, I also look at, you know, the, the contract here. The fee is for $12,000 for, in, in four investments. So, it's for four months, beginning in June 1st. And if we're talking about this being a long-term thing, we're only talking about four months. So, what really in the next four months is that critical for long-term communications? That, to Jamie's point, that we're gonna get the bang for the buck here unless we're committed to spending more than the $12,000 because you're gonna need that consistency of that messaging, you know, long-term for it to be effective. So, you know, we're looking at 12 grand just for the four months here.
That's going, and that's going over the summer months as well. So, who's really gonna be watching and seeing it?
Staff is fine either way. We wanted to present it to you all as an opportunity for us to engage the public in a more proactive manner in terms of education. And if, if council doesn't wanna go there, then we're totally fine with that. We just wanted to present the opportunity.
It's not that I didn't ever wanna go there. I'm just wondering how are they, how are they getting to the people we really need to get to?
Well, and I think that that's, I think that that's what the trial run would be for. Because a lot of, well, let me just back up because, you know, again, we like to manage misinformation from a single resident. That's what the, um, contract said, which is not accurate. So, a PR firm draws up whatever the contract says. So, um, this is not for misinformation to management's information from one single resident. Now, with that being said, yes, there is a lot of misinformation that is going on that we are trying to address. And unfortunately, that does hinder the other things that the rest of staff can do. I find it really, um, I don't, I don't even know what the right word is, discouraging that, you know, people are saying that we are going to affront, it's a direct affront to a citizen's First Amendment rights. I am not sure how council is stifling someone's First Amendment rights by getting a PR firm to send out, um, information about what is going on, um, within the village. With that being said, it's also that staff is, um, staff is not capable of doing this work. They are, um, it, it's really pretty, you know, I, I wonder if this person has even been in and met with staff. But, I'm pretty sure our staff is not incompetent. That's the word I'm looking for. That's the word that someone used. So, before you start calling our staff incompetent, I would suggest you come into Village Hall and meet with them. Because our staff is amazing. They are professional and they do great work. Unfortunately, there is a lot of misinformation that is running around, um, the village. And so, when our staff has to take time away from their day to, or multiple days, to try and combat that, it takes away from other things that they could be doing. I, E, the Army Corps, Christina just talked about the Army Corps. We got a letter that we haven't done anything wrong. Do you know how much time was taken away from staff doing that? And oh, by the way, do you know how much time was taken away from the Army Corps being out here when they should have been in Western North Carolina, dealing with all of that mess? So, it, it is, it is unfortunate that we have people within the village that don't take responsibility for just lobbing bombs out there and just walking away and causing a lot of misinformation. I'm gonna keep saying that. That's not really the word that I wanna use, but I'm gonna keep saying misinformation. These are not personal attacks on people, by the way, because I'm sure that's what I'm gonna get. We have a fiduciary responsibility. When people put out misinformation, we have a responsibility to come out and say what is actually accurate. I, E, we got a letter from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources that say we don't need to do any work on the, uh, on the, uh, park project next door to Village Hall. And somebody just posted that, um, let's see, what did they just post? That we are ignoring state guidance and we're at risk of violating both state and federal preservation laws. I have a letter in front of me that's dating May 8th that we are fine, that there is no work that we need to do. But yet this person, whoever it is, because they, you know, don't put their name to this stuff, today said that we are at risk. So, this is the type of stuff that staff is now going to have to go and deal with because people just lob bombs and without any sort of, well, I mean, there, there's a letter here. There is a letter here that I have that I've read that we don't have to do anything, that we're fine. So, I would much rather be spending money on grants and things like that than having our staff... Okay, I was like, what's happening? Is the building on fire? But, I would much rather have staff working on this type of stuff. But also somebody said that we're like taking away your constitutional right for your First Amendment. Like, come on. I don't think anybody's ever said you can't say anything. What we would like for you to do is actually, you know, get informed and say what is actually accurate and not the other stuff. So, again, I'm six one way, half a dozen the other. I'm not really sure I really care if we do this contract or not. But, part of the reason that we are doing it is long-term planning, talking about what we're trying to, trying to accomplish here. Part of it is that people put out misinformation and we have to correct it. We have a duty to tell the community at large what is actually going on.
Okay, so can I ask, so I understand your point about, you know, this $12,000 for four months. All right, we know that Austin and Polamy are bogged down right now with a lot of extra stuff and they can't get to the communications like they would like to. So, if we do this as a trial to get through a hump and then they are able to then continue with the long-term, this is a, a helping hand, so to, so to speak, like a, you know, just an extra person for a little while to get through a hump. I really feel like that's where staff is trying to get to at this point, to get through the next little bit so that they can get back on track. Because they're, they've got so many other commitments that they can't keep up with communication as well as they'd like to. So, from, from my standpoint, I don't see a problem with a short-term fix on this. I don't wanna see it go to a forever thing or I would say hire a staff person to do this, that we would just need more staff. But I feel like that it's kind of like a temporary situation to get through a hump. That's my thought.
I'm of the belief, it doesn't matter what you do, it's, it is never gonna stop. The false information, the bad information, the inaccurate, way off the base, not putting your name on behind something, it, it doesn't matter how much money you spend on that. They're still gonna do it because they can. And that's, that's their right to do it. It's, you know, I, I guess we just have to encourage, in my view, we just have to encourage, just get a little bit involved. At least accept an email from us that, that you can maybe get some good information or maybe make that extra effort and make a phone call to a councilman or a staff member or something like that. But, none of this, you do all the marketing in the world. It's, this is going to continue. And, and some people are gonna be as nasty as they can be and it's, it's part of kind of being on this side of, you know, being an elected official. And it is a lot of, it is a lot of work and how you see it, but it's like, for me, I, I, I don't see how something like this. I think what we're doing is, is good and we're doing what we can. But, if, and if you really wanna know and you really, are you, are you one of those, I, I think we're, we're doing stuff for just a very few amount of people. Because there's only a handful that are really doing this.
Yeah, I'm not talking about getting ahead of that. That you never are. I'm talking about helping them get their, their normal communications out for these long-term projects and stuff that they just don't have time right now to do. In a, in a, just a temporary kind of helping hand kind of situation is my thought about this. But, you know, yes, you're never gonna get ahead of that kind of stuff.
But, when we hear misinformation, we have a responsibility to at least put it out there. Because in the absence of the truth, people will just believe whatever is printed and said. So, we, as a village, have the responsibility to make sure that the truth is out there. And if, you know, this firm helps us do some of the long-term planning and then Austin and Polamy can continue to work on that type of stuff, then so be it. But, again, it, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a twofold, in my opinion.
We're, we are not just, I have many friends that are councilmen, council members in their municipalities and this is not, this is not isolated to us. It's, it's, as a matter of fact, was it last year we did the, the, the meeting, the web meeting? And that was the biggest issue that came up. The biggest issue that came up is that communication, the, that people twist and turn and, so it's not just us. And, and we're just gonna have to deal with it. I just don't know how we measure the return on investment on it. And I don't know, I, I know it takes, I know it takes a, a load off of, a load off of, um, staff, especially with, with Austin. I, I keep trying to, we're, we're putting Band-Aids on stuff and, and we're never, we can, on something we can never fix. We can, I, I, again, I just keep saying, there's no amount of money you can put out there. And I would love to take burden off of you, I, but please understand, we'll never be able to, we'll never be able to, because it's just gonna keep piling on. It's something else. Because as long as we have these insane record requests that are taking, let's just say 30, 40% of your time, 30 to 40% of the time can be doing this amongst other things that are being slighted, that are being pushed to the back burner. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I know the time she spends doing crazy stuff. If people, if, if people actually knew, when you come in and they actually knew what Christina, what you, what Hunter, what, what, all these staff members do to address issues that are, issues that are just manufactured for no reason. They get no results. That takes time away from her doing stuff that, that, that advances the well-being of the rest of the, of the village. That doesn't, just like the letter there. We've got people on social media that just said what, what Kim just outlined. Now, how we do that? She's tomorrow is gonna have to start working on that. She's gonna have to start working on that tomorrow. And how, I, I see some of her emails and some of her things that she writes and I'm like, oh my God, it would take, it would take someone a week to write that. And it's just one email addressing one issue. So, again, I, I'm not sold on it because I don't think we, I don't think if we had a million-dollar budget. Because there are people that, look, we've got, what, one, one person that showed up. We don't have anyone show up to coffee with council and the same people, the same, give the same misinformation and, and provide the same propaganda, never show up. And when they do, it's only to criticize only, and, and I keep saying to everyone, they know until they don't. Hell, we had $14 million cash on hand. You know what? They knew that until they didn't. But they made the statement, did you hear an apology? Did you go, oh my God, I'm wrong with that. I'm wrong. No, you never did. People make statements all the time. They never get called out on it. If you put something on a social post, you'd have more credibility if you'd put your name underneath it. And, and hopefully, before they put it on a social media post, they'd come in and sit down and, and they'd have the conversation with Christina or yourself or with Hunter before they did it. And then put your name on it. I know, I can count 10 different items where we did something for someone in this village that does not like us, that trashes us every chance they get, and we've done stuff for them and not one time did they stroke one key on the keyboard to say, you know what, they did this for me and I really appreciate that. But man, their, their fingers get tingly when they can find, if they could find something that goes against what we do. So, I am not for spending $12,000. I wouldn't, I wouldn't pay them a nickel.
How about I propose a, somewhere in between? Is there, is there an opportunity for an internship at a college and someone who wants communication and stuff that can take that information?
Summertime.
Put it out, I mean, there's gotta be someone who's, I know a lot of people are looking for it. And it could be slightly paid or stipend or whatever or, you know, we're, we're not spending that kind of money. But if they're in the communication in their last years of school, they should pretty much know how to get that message out and stuff. And it gives them an opportunity. Or is that my going, am I reaching?
So, we, we, we thought about that and we were looking for a PR firm that had experience. We don't, we don't want to have to babysit someone, unfortunately. And, and I hate to say it that way, but essentially it would really be us still doing the work. I mean, they would be making things pretty, but we needed someone that had some experience in municipal government to understand some of the challenges that we face and, and ways to engage, um, the public in that standpoint. We, we needed someone with some actual experience.
There's not any amount of money that is gonna shut up an individual to spew wrong information. That is never gonna stop. It isn't. It, 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 it won't, you see it across the country, nationally, in, in local and it's like, you know, and then anytime for sure I see a news clip, you know this as well as I do, anytime I see a news clip, I'm like, they're presenting something to us. And I'm looking at it going, okay, I wonder what the real story is behind it. Because they're, they're, they're sending the message out to us and spinning it to get our interest.
So, I think, I think there's a consensus. We don't wanna move forward. Is that kinda what I'm hearing?
I don't know, but I'm, I'm just saying, I was on the fence of this because, and I am a marketing major in college and I'm sitting there going, and you see what happens.
Everybody take one step back.
We are totally fine if you guys don't wanna do it. We don't, we don't have to...
Hold on, hold on, I just wanna make that clear. That is, that is not the point of this. That is not the point. Plain and simple.
Public, public debate. If, if you, if there's an issue that, that before you put it on social media, you come here with coffee with council or come make a public comment. Make a, you know what, make an appointment with staff and say, I have a concern. This is what I'm hearing. And then, and then you can go back and say, I've heard this, but it's truly this. Because you get it from staff. You don't have to get it from council, but just get it from staff. I, I mean, and, oh, by the way, if you, an anonymous source means that person who's writing it didn't source anybody.
To, to, to me, the, the way I would look at this, how to handle...
To, to me, the, the way I would look at this, how to handle it, and I'm saying it's almost an automatic response. Goes out on Nextdoor, we have a Nextdoor account, automatic response. Feel free to reach out to your staff member or council member to get the real information.
We do not have a Nextdoor account anymore.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's, that's where they're getting the, the, that's, the messages are going out and that's what we're reading, a lot of it is and stuff. But, but it's, I mean, it would be an automatic send. Feel free, here's their names, here's their number, feel free to reach out and, you know, and again, that, that takes up more time. Put it on us, put it on the council.
They won't, because they won't come to coffee with council.
Exactly, exactly.
They don't want the facts to get in the way of a good, of a good story.
Thank you guys for considering it.
Open topics.
I've got one.
Nope.
I have seven.
Leave it to your microphone. Talk, talk in.
I have good news, and this is for Joe. Joe was always worried about Tom Short Road coming into Marvin from the stoplight. Marvin Creek's HOA is stopped, is talking with Tullamore and Amber Meadows to get up where they either do it twice or maybe four times a year to clean all that out and keep it down.
Fantastic. Love that.
Kudos to all three of those.
Thank you very much to Tullamore, Amber Meadows, and Marvin Creek for doing that.
That is, that's great that three, three HOAs are working together for a common cause that is making the village a greater place. That's nice.
Yeah, that's awesome. Anything else? All right, moving on, review action items.
I didn't, I really. Okay. Sorry, scrolling back through, we've got the resolution of opposition, so we will send that off. We're not moving forward with the stream review at this time. Davy's gonna order a sign to prepare the ordinance for the no U-turn at Oakbrook Drive. We're gonna move forward with petitioning for abandonment for Nellie and Grig in Providence Ridge, those streets, but not the others that aren't fully in Marvin. We're going to reach out to the affected property owners of Baja Farms at the end to request that they annex. And if not, we will just request NCDO to abandon up to our municipal boundaries. We've got the trail standards. We will get those folded into our spec manual. You had a fee schedule on the consent agenda. We'll get that updated on our website. You approve reimbursing rezoning fees for the existing applications since the MDO. We're gonna get those refunded.
Just one question, are, are we, are we moving forward with the abandonment of, of Grig and the other one?
Yes.
Or are we talking to the HOA first to give them an opportunity to, to talk internally first?
Annexation is a property owner issue, not an HOA, but.
HOA for the, my thing is HOA.
Correct. Before we move forward with the abandonment and their, yeah.
Okay. Other than that, we've got public hearings scheduled now and you guys made your recommendations for the, for the roundabouts for the critical intersections. I think that's about it.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Next up, review of the mayor pro-kimla.
All right, Austin, you ready?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Howie's not ready. He knows this is up after his. Ready?
I don't know who he is.
And go.
Yeah, that sounds like one of your rice burners.
Get him. Ready? Okay. Christina Russell Standard, agreement? Signed, sealed, delivered?
No, we were waiting for DOT, but we can do that. We can actually execute that now.
Mr. Mayor, you need to arrange a meeting with the Waxaw Mayor regarding the sports complex. And I know you guys had a meeting about Bonn's Grove Waxaw. Did you talk about the sports complex?
We, I think it was brought up, but they're so, I don't want to put anything out before, I don't want to get ahead of their skis is, I think, fair to say because they've got a lot of work that they need to do, John, if you want.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting and discussed that and a number of other subjects, but they're still talking internally on some stuff on their own.
Okay, so let's push that to the fall, Austin. Yep, yeah.
Talking to them.
Okay. Christina, asphalt contract with Ray Clay.
Well, we'll do that and the next one.
All right. Extension of the concrete contract?
Yeah, and Union Environmental.
Yep. Tyler, you got any organizations yet? Nope. Okay. Oh, Davy, what's going on with the traffic calming in the preserve?
I've not heard anything from them, but I will.
Is it green light on? The green light's on, it's on.
I know, I can't hear them though.
I actually think that, that term expired because I think we only gave them 30 days, so.
30 days?
Sixty days, so it's 27th of this month. So I'll reach out to their property manager tomorrow and find out.
Fantastic.
That's a quiet mic, by the way. The speakers for the mic that the audio comes out of is on that side of the room.
Okay, well, because I heard Hunter fine. I couldn't hear Davy. He just talks lower. Oh, Jill's gone. Okay, so, uh... Chaplain, you're gonna bring back some of the truck information, so we'll leave that on there. Okay.
Did you guys want to take off under 2023 for Parkland? That's been on there forever and does it look like it's, does it look like it's going anywhere?
Which one?
Under January 10th, 2023, Parkland.
Nope, I want to leave that. Thank you.
That's it? Okay, council comments. Wait.
I want to, again, ditto. Thank you, staff. You, you go through a lot and, but you still push through to do a lot of great things for the village of Marvin. And council, too, thank you for, for hanging in there. And we get, we get a lot of arrows, but we take them and we move forward. Law enforcement, thank you. You keep us, you keep us safe here and those numbers reflect your, your work and what you do. And on a personal note, proud to say that my youngest son got accepted to medical school. Starting his son. Thanks.
Just want to thank everybody that participated, all the residents that came out from Marvin Day. As was mentioned earlier, I think there's still things we can do to fine-tune. I, I know we condensed the time this year. It wasn't as much of a full-day event. And, you know, I don't know if we need to consider that again or how we kind of structure it, but we had tons of people there during the day and then by the evening it kind of filtered out. So I don't know if as many people took advantage of, you know, when we had the band and stuff like that. But certainly when the families were out with all the kids, we, we were pretty well overrun. So I think just kind of analyzing, you know, the people that are attending and what their needs are, you know, we'll continue to refine that, but great job by, by everyone. And thank you to all the residents that came out.
Thank you. Andy?
Well, I guess everybody has pretty much said everything. So ditto to, to what everybody said. I mean, I do, really do appreciate all the effort that everybody puts in. And I did think that Marvin Day was, was a pretty good success. Seems like all of our events have been pretty smooth and have had a lot of, of people come out and enjoy the park and each other. So that's, that is very encouraging because that's the whole point, is to, to get the community together and, and we're, we're a better community when we are together, so that's all I've got.
Bob?
Ditto to Andy who dittoed everybody else, so.
Kimberly, don't say nothing. Say something.
Something. No, just kidding. I actually was gonna say something. I do want to, I do want to thank staff. When I hear about people going online and saying things that are just rude and untrue about you guys, it really bothers me. You guys can shoot arrows at council all day long, but leave staff alone. Staff does an amazing job. They do not deserve to be called incompetent. It is just, it's beneath, it's beneath people in this village to act like that. And it's just, it's, it's a sad state when you've got an adult calling your staff at the village incompetent. So I appreciate you guys. You guys work your butts off for us and, and I really do appreciate you. I appreciate council, all the errors that we take, which I'm fine with. But I appreciate you guys and all the hard work that, that we put in. And to the sheriff's department, thank you guys so very much. We appreciate you. And to the residents, I am, I am grateful and appreciative to you. I love having dialogue and would like to have more of that. So I encourage you to get your information from staff, from council, come to coffee with council. Don't go online and get it because most of it is just not true.
Thank you, Kim. Again, I'll thank staff, appreciate all the work that they've done and continue to do. And I agree with Kim. I, I've heard some things and conversations that have gotten pretty nasty where there's pretty much serious cussing going on, as I understand. And it's, it's, it is, it should be beneath them. But, I mean, people have time on their hands. You never know what they're gonna do. But hold your head high, I would say with staff because we believe the ones that are closest to you, we know you're doing the job and you're doing it well. And we couldn't ask for a better staff, so I appreciate all that every one of you do. I am gonna make a promise. I mean, there are, ideas are free and I know I was, my mind goes 5,000 miles an hour thinking about it. But I'm serious, I'm gonna at least go to Wuma and see if I can get some people or some other municipalities to approach our legislature and, you know, go after like, look, we, we all know we can't afford this. The budgets are tight. And they're coming at us saying we need funding for it. Tap the, the individuals that are unincorporated. And, and there's no reason they shouldn't because they've been enjoying all the things we do, whether it's having a full-time officer that's available, that could be closer to them, all those things that had happened down to roads and everything else. Because, you know, I, I, I just think there's gotta be some way. And if there's one thing that I, I accomplish, I wish it would be something like that where we could have some sort of say in what happens with the unincorporated area or at least movement on that. So I will promise to take that to the next Wuma meeting. I'm gonna say this, I, I miss a lot when I'm gone. When I was gone, I understand a resident put a fence across the road. I mean, there, people are doing crazy stuff out there and, and they're not going to, by, by committee to do it. They're just doing it on their own. So at least we have a committee and we have a, a meeting and we discuss things and, and things move that way. But it's, it's crazy. So do a deep dive when you, when, when it's time to vote for your next elected officials and find out what they're doing. I will say this, too. We got graduation coming up. I want to congratulate all the kids that are graduating college as well as the high school graduates at Marvin and the other surrounding schools in the area. I know it's a big deal. Big decisions are made. Be safe out there, be smart and enjoy what the next chapter of your life is. And the final note, again, sorry I missed Marvin Day, but the final note, those residents, I'm gonna appeal to you that really like what we're doing. Just make a comment out there and, and maybe reach out to staff and tell them because I, I get those from individuals that are saying how, how great you do at your job, even though I know you feel it every day and it's, it's coming from different. But it's really only coming from a few. It's just, it's a lot and it, and it's tough, so. But thank you for that. Are we going into closed session? All right.
I'm gonna make a motion to recess in a closed session pursuant to NCGS 14331811A36 to consult with an attorney retained by the council to preserve attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We don't need our thingies, right?
No.